Look, I don't agree with you about the Bartlet payment, but I'm 150% behind on the checks and balances. I agree with you. We have to. And I'm hungry, so I don't know.
Oh, yeah, me too.
Well, that's why we get a special one.
[inaudible]
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 Somebody receiving that?
No.
All right, ready to go? All right, ready to go? Welcome to the 2028-2025 State Council Meeting, City Council Chamber, 6:30 PM. We'll start with a prayer. Dear God, today is such an open as we pray your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction, which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our fathers. May it be granted this day that we take decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city, make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Do you want to salute the flag? Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. To a republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Mr. Clark, please call the roll.
Counselor Belanger.
Here.
Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Dakota.
Here.
Counselor Getchea.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Mercia.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Eleven presidents.
Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in darkened chambers in honor of the late Edmund P. O'Connor, better known as Oki to many people, in '94, of Lowell, Massachusetts, in York, Maine. He passed away on Thursday, October 16th, 2025, with his family by his side. For over 60 years, he was the beloved husband of Martha A. Regan O'Connor, who survives him. They called each other Red. The son of Irish immigrants, Edmund was born in Lowell on May 7th, 1931, to John J. and Christine D. Tulen O'Connor. Edmund attended the St. Patrick Boys' School, where he was awarded the Brother John Medal, and played on their state championship CYO baseball team. After graduating from Lowell High School, he immediately enlisted in the United States Air Force and served four years of active duty during the Korean Conflict as a member of the 48th Fighter Squadron. For 32 years, Edmund was a proud member of the City of Lowell Fire Department and served many of those years as a deputy chief in the department. In addition to his home in Lowell, Edmund also resided in York, Maine, for nearly 60 years. His time in Maine with its cold waters, dark skies, and extended family was joyous. Of his many trips, his favorites included Yankee Stadium to watch the New York Giants, the Football Hall of Fame in Canton, Ohio, his parents' home in County's Limerick, in Sligo, major Civil War battlefields, and President Kennedy's grave soon after the assassination. He loved big man music, bacon bread, a 1964 Volkswagen convertible, the New England Patriots, and the Boston Red Sox. He's a trained speed reader. He enjoyed mysteries, espionage, and a variety of nonfiction. But Willa Cather's "My Antonia," read several times, was his favorite. Over the years, Edmund raised a long line of terriers, Kerry Blues, Airedales, and most recently, an Irish terrier named Jack, who was with him in his final days. Besides his wife Martha, Edmund is survived by a daughter, Christine O'Connor of Lowell, our former city solicitor, and many nieces and nephews. Edmund also has a large extended family in Ireland, including his surviving first cousin, Teresa Tulen of Sligo, Ireland. He was the brother of the late Eileen Archbold, John C. O'Connor, Sheila Early, Gerald F. O'Connor, James R. O'Connor, Edna C. Sterk, and Mary T. Heidenreich. Many thanks to Duville Life and Wellness for the outstanding care over the past few months. In addition to burial services with U.S. Military Honors, which were held for his family, friends and relatives are invited to his memorial mass to be held on Friday, October 31st, at St. Christopher's Church in York, Maine, at 11 o'clock. Thank you.
Counselor Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in darkened chamber and announce the passing of Norman Mark Jutress at the age of 56. He lost his long courageous battle with cancer. He was a devoted husband, loving father, and loyal friend to many. Norman will be remembered for his kindness, humor, and love he shared with those around him. He worked for the City of Lowell as a carpenter in the land and buildings for over 25-plus years. His family was his greatest joy, and he will live in their hearts forever. He is survived by his loving wife Heather Jutress, his daughter Desiree Jutress, and her partner DJ Talbot, sons Brandon, Jean Pierre, and wife Gracie Zachary Jutress, Sean, Jean Pierre, and Cody Jutress, granddaughter Kylie, Aria, Presley, and grandson Leo. He will be truly missed. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence in darkened chamber to all those who passed away since our last city council meeting. I just got this in, so please forgive me if I don't say everything that I'm supposed to, but I'd also lastly like to offer a moment of silence for David V. Dave Leclerc. A longtime resident of Lowell, he passed away peacefully at his home. He was the beloved husband of the late Betty Bunny Strulis Leclerc, with whom he shared over 50 years of marriage until her recent passing in March of 2025 of this year. He was born in Fitchburg, but he spent most of his younger years, and he was the son of the late Victor and Stella Leclerc. Though he never had children of his own, Dave selflessly stepped into the role of father to Bunny's children, Sarah Jordan and her spouse Sean of Pelham, New Hampshire, Tim Conter of Franklin, New Hampshire, David Conter, and the late Michael Conter of Lowell. His devotion to Bunny was endless. There was no Dave without Bunny. Together, they shared a beautiful life with laughter, love, and faith. Those who knew them could know that they had a deep bond and shared an enduring love as they are now reunited once again. He was the proud Pepe to many, Sarah, Alyssa, Lauren, Leanne, Race, Zachary, and great-grandchildren Alexia and Charlene Luca. He shared a particular special bond with his first grandchild Stephanie, as well as his daughter Peyton Southworth, with whom whose loving care and devotion over the past decade brought great comfort and joy to Bunny and Dave. For many years, Dave worked as a dedicated truck driver for BFI Republic Service, taking great pride in his work and his role in the community. A lifelong resident of Epping Street, Dave was the kind of neighbor everyone wished they had, friendly, dependable, and quick to lend a hand. I just want to say that we offer our condolences to his family, relatives, and many friends. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Getchea?
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. Mary Meehan Conneville, age 66, of Londonderry, New Hampshire. The loving wife, mother, grandmother, sister, aunt, and educator died on October 24th, 2025, at her Londonderry home surrounded by her loving family and friends. She is survived by her husband James T. Conneville and their three children. Born October 3rd, 1959 in Lowell, she was the daughter of the late Martin T. Meehan and Alice Britton Meehan. Mary was diagnosed with glioblastoma in March of 2025. Mary's life was guided by faith, hope, and love. As tumors progressed, progression took away everything she had. It could not take away who she was. Mary's prayers increasingly focused on peace for her loved ones, neighbors, family, faith, clergy, and all of her family. In praying peace for those she loved, Mary was in turn blessed with more than 200 days of peace, her husband James Conneville said. Mary was devoted to her family and to the students she had, the pleasure of teaching during her years as an educator. Her career in education included teaching appointments at the Immaculate Conception School, St. Patrick's School, both in Lowell and at the Academy of Notre Dame in Tinsborough. Mary earned a master's degree in education and curriculum and instruction, cum laude, from UMass Lowell, and held a BS from the University of Lowell in law and justice with a minor in psychology. She also was a certified paralegal. Throughout her life, Mary demonstrated a commitment to education and to the well-being of her students. She was a valued member of professional organizations, including groups affiliated in the Archdiocese of Boston and the New England Associations of Schools and Colleges. She was a member of Phi Lambda Theta Honor Society. She often said her proudest professional achievement was being credited by her former students for helping them develop a lifetime love of learning and serving as their north star through their formative years. Loyal to her friends and generous with her time for those in need, Mary was active in the Archdiocese of Boston Clergy Sexual Abuse Survivor Community. Mary loved the beach, hiking, fine dining, and family outings. She loved being involved in holiday celebrations and activities with her children and grandchildren. Mary is survived by her three children, Alexander Conneville, Michael Conneville, and his wife Julian, and their sons, Michael Ryan Conneville Jr. and Evan Conneville and his wife Yelvina, and their sons Matthias and Benjamin Conneville. She also leaves her sister Colleen and her husband John Chirco, her sister Kathleen Meehan Bailey, and her husband Bill, her brother Martin Meehan and his wife Jennifer, her brother Mark Meehan and his wife Nancy, her sister Maureen Meehan, her brother Paul Meehan and his wife Karen, her brother-in-law Ralph Conneville, her brother-in-law Robert Conneville and his wife Cheryl, her sister-in-law Carol Palmer and her husband Tom, and many nieces and nephews, including godchildren Amanda Bailey and Sarah Meehan. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to offer a moment of silence in darkened chamber for Thomas F. O'Reilly of South Boston. Left this world a far less witty places on October 9, 2025. He is survived by his sibling, Dr. Joseph G. O'Reilly and his wife Caroline, Robert E. O'Reilly and his wife Diane, Diane M. McManus, and her husband Robert, Donna Matero and her husband David, William J. O'Reilly and his wife Elizabeth. In addition, he is remembered with love by his 50 niece and nephew and 10 great-niece and great-nephew. Tom was noted for his sharp humors and waving integrity and brilliant mind, quality that defined both his career and his life. Son of the late Brookline Fire Department Captain Thomas F. O'Reilly and Ann Donahue O'Reilly. Tom studied at Boston College before serving as a captain in the United States Marine Corps, including a tour in Vietnam. He later served at the U.S. Naval Activity Command in London, England, as a guard officer for the Naval Nuclear Training Facility and a state side at Infantry Commander. He continued his military service with the Navy Commendation Medal for composure under enemy fire, a Vietnam Service Medal, and a President Unit Citation. Back in Massachusetts, Tom joined the State Department Security Division, guiding head of state around the world while pursuing his law degree at Suffolk University. Over decades of legal service, Tom built his career defined by skill, integrity, dedication, culminated in his role as Assistant District Attorney in the Middlesex County, where he handled numerous high-profile cases and command respect as a formidable yet fair prosecutor. Beyond his professional accomplishments, Tom was deeply devoted to his family. He was the go-to 2:00 AM call from his niece and nephews, a furious lawyer brothers, and a steadfast uncle, always ready to offer honest guidance, debate any topic, or find the perfect gift. A South Boston resident for decades, Tom could often be found on his front balcony, taking in his slide of Boston Harbor View with the police scanners on his volume. Tom's legacy is one of service, greed, and love. A brilliant man who lived life guided by a strong moral compass and left a lasting mark on all who know him. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank Counselor Getchea for acknowledging and saying a memorial for Mrs. Conneville. She was my two boys' teacher as well, even during her retirement and after my boys graduated. She would text us, see how they are doing every so often. She'll be greatly missed by the entire education community. I want to extend my condolences and peace to her entire family. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Clark, please hit lights. May the Lord rest in peace. Section 2, Measure 2.1, communication for remote zoom participation. Motion to accept the petition filed by Counselor Belanger, seconded by Counselor Chow, the FIAI. Post-motion passes. 2.2, your proclamation this evening honoring Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Just have your attention, please. Do we have Ms. Golden here, Mr. Manager? Our proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Breast cancer remains one of the most common cancers among women in the United States, affecting 1 in 8 women during their lifetime, impacting countless families, friends, and communities. An early detection through rigorous screenings and increased public awareness significantly improves survival rates and outcomes, making education and access to care essential components in the fight against breast cancer. In the month of October, is nationally recognized as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, a time to honor survivors, remember those lost, and support ongoing research, advocacy, and outreach efforts. And the residents in the City of Lowell stand united in promoting health equity, supporting local and national organizations dedicated to breast cancer prevention and treatment, and encouraging wide-open dialogue about women's health and wellness. Now therefore, I am the Attorney General P. Rourke, Mayor of the City of Lowell, Massachusetts, hereby proclaim October 25th as the month of October 25th as Breast Cancer Awareness Month along with my fellow members of the City Council and administration, and urge all citizens to participate in activities and initiatives that raise awareness, foster hope, and advance the cause of any breast cancer for the future generations. Signed, this date. Thank you all very much for that. Returning to the agenda. Section 3, City Clerk, 3.1, mention of the transportation subcommittee October 21st, City Council regular meeting October 21st, are accepted by Counselor Dakota, seconded by Counselor Getchea, all the FIAI, post-motion passes. Counselor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's not 7:00 yet for public hearing. If we have time, I was wondering if we can take Item 6.2, Information Report on the UMass Link Update.
Seconded by Counselor Chow, seconded by Counselor Noon, all the FIAI, post-motion passes. 6.2, Information Report, UMass Lowell Chancellor Chen, here to address Link and the ICC update. Chancellor, good evening. Thank you for being here.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Rourke. Thank you, City Council. It's a great pleasure to be here tonight and give you an update on the Link project and the ICC. So, let me start. Is this showing up on your screen? Yes. Now you can see that. Okay, great. So, let me start by saying thank you all for your support because the Link project is an exciting vision that we talk about, not as two buildings, not as a handful of plots on the university campus, but as a catalyst for economic development for all of Lowell. And you can see from this image that if you loosely squint a little, like the yellow lines sort of represent Massachusetts. So, we see Link as really going beyond the campus. You can see the acre. You can see the high school. You can see Middlesex Community College, 110 Canal, HCID, all the way down to the commuter rail. But this is really only the start. We anticipate that the activity that we're talking about will have a huge impact on all of Lowell, greater Lowell, and frankly, north of Boston and the Commonwealth. So, let me start by giving you a little bit of a context here. As we've talked about before, the goal here is to bring great jobs to Lowell. Companies that want to hire our students, companies that want to hire the residents of Lowell, and companies that want to bring, again, great jobs with discretionary income that help to advance the city and the region around it. For us, it's creating those career-connected experiences, paid internships, paid co-ops. But as you'll see, we have a lot of programs that really support potential employees all the way from high school graduates and beyond. We're thankful for the support at every level, the mayor, the city manager, the city council, our state delegation, the late Ed Kennedy, our Congresswoman Lori Trahan, and of course, the governor and lieutenant governor. It is the support at every level that makes this vision possible. And I want to thank everybody here because everybody in the City of Lowell who has supported this, it's important because the governor and the lieutenant governor and the state don't make a commitment, like I'll talk about, if they don't feel like we're all rowing in the same direction. And so, I want to start by thanking everybody because the fact that they see the support of the mayor, the city manager, and the city council, and our state delegation makes them willing to make an investment. Also, the UMass president and our UMass Board of Trustees. So, let me see. You can see a bunch of dots here. I'm going to go through just a few examples of some of the updates of things that are happening, but as you can see, I won't go through all of these, but let me just hit a few. So, first of all, we were very excited yesterday down at the State House that the governor and lieutenant governor made a great announcement, which was a $25 million investment in a Draper building that will be in the HCID district. This is a microelectronics manufacturing building. The state's investment makes it possible for all the financing to work out, and we're excited that this is going to mean a groundbreaking within the next several months, either end of this year or early into next year, for this building that will showcase Lowell as a place for high-tech manufacturing. We're also excited, as I mentioned, that in 110 Canal, which our robotics center, our M2D2 medical device center, we're continuing to expand the capabilities in there, and we just received a $5 million award from the state through Mass Tech Collaborative for a human performance center. This is a partnership with Homebase, with Mass General Brigham, with companies that are part of the whole human performance and rehabilitation piece. It links to a lot of the work that we're doing, as we mentioned, in making sure that the opportunities are there for all residents and all of this Commonwealth. So, for example, two programs, Bioversity through Mass Bio is one which takes people that have a high school degree, and many of these folks are in their late 20s, early 30s. They maybe have just been doing gig work. On average, their salaries are maybe $30,000. After eight weeks paid in this program, they're ready to be hired into entry-level positions in the life sciences sector. And we've seen, on average, their salaries go up to $60,000 with benefits for these people who now are in a valuable industry sector. And we're working with the companies to make sure they continue to pay to upskill so that they can continue to build on their careers and create that generation wealth. So, Bioversity is an example. We have another program called Vets Rise, which takes servicemen and women who are ready to leave the service, become veterans, but same thing. They come with great skills, but we help train them into an industry sector. In this case, whether it's life sciences, we're going to expand to cybersecurity, microelectronics, help them on a path after they've served us and our nation so well to get into a good-paying career. So, these are examples of workforce development that are continuing to expand as a result of Link. Companies such as Vertex, Thermo Fisher, Vericel, these are the companies that are now hiring these folks that are coming out of these programs. The other thing is, you may have heard that we bought 201 Cabot. We're excited, thanks to Congresswoman Lori Trahan, who helped get federal funding that offset most of the cost of that building. We've been able to focus our RISD Institute for Sustainability and Energy in that building, but we've already drawn companies. Weston and Sampson, which has offices all up and down the East Coast. Trident Agriculture is a small startup that moved here from the West Coast. And also, as you can see, we have great partnerships with Liberty Mutual, National Grid, and 201 Cabot is becoming a microcosm of what we've envisioned for all of Link. It's a place where startups, big companies like National Grid, students, faculty, and the whole innovation sector come together to work together and make sure we grow economic development and good jobs here in Lowell. Wanta Lancet, you're all familiar with that building. The university occupied it mostly with administrative offices that we vacated so that we can move companies in. We didn't want to wait. It takes two, three years to build a new building. We want to anchor these companies right here in Lowell. And so, Draper has renovated a whole floor in Wanta Lancet. SIC has contributed $1.3 million to help upgrade our cybersecurity and cyber SOC that will help train students, including Middlesex Community College students, on how they can support the cybersecurity efforts, something I know the city has a great interest in also. Cyber SOC helps municipalities defend against cyber attacks. So, we'll be creating a lot of the talent pool to support municipalities and companies in cybersecurity. There are other companies that are moving in also into that space. The buildings that are new that will be built, we've talked about that before. The Industry Colo Building, which will have some of our faculty and staff, as well as other companies, and the market-rate housing apartments that will be right next to it. Those are currently in conceptual design. We're working with the developers. We're working with the developers to get things more defined in terms of the companies that will move in because those companies will dictate what they're looking for in the floors that they are going to occupy. So, at that point, we will go further into schematic design and then construction design. So, that process is continuing to move forward in securing those companies that are going to lease those spaces. And last but not least, actually, we got one more after this. I think everybody's heard, not our building, but we're very happy that Sea Dog has bought El Jefe. Not an accident, you see the location, we're excited about their presence right in the middle of where those two new buildings are going to be. Yeah. So, I'm sure you've heard about it already. So, we're excited about that. That will, again, continue to add vitality. And of course, I think you're all aware of the Futures League, especially Counsel Getche is probably very aware of that Futures League. We know that they are, we're negotiating with the owners of the team that will be located there as a summer league. So, it's about, and I want to take a step back because it is really about this idea of bringing good jobs, bringing companies that see Lowell as a place to locate as the next Kendall Square. It's an opportunity to provide that entertainment so that that helps the rest of the folks that want to come into Lowell and take advantage of that. And it's a great, obviously, opportunity from our point of view to give our students that career-connected experience and give them a reason to stay in Lowell. We graduate over 4,000 students a year. We want some of them, not all of them, but we want some of them to stay in Lowell and be part of this city as a race families and become that next generation of leaders. So, thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions you might have, but it's an exciting time, and there continue to be lots of companies that we're talking to that are excited to be here because of this vision you are all helping us build. Thank you.
Let me write down a line. Counsel Belangio.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I want to give deepest appreciation for Chancellor Julie Chen, for her and her staff for coming in here this evening, explaining this to the council and to the viewers at home, to the public of just what is going on in the city of Lowell, where we will soon be a powerhouse as far as innovation, research and development, life sciences, Bioversity, you name it. It's all very, very exciting stuff, all coming to Lowell in the very near future, but it wouldn't be without the partnerships with our greatest asset, UMass Lowell, and our administration, the Golden Administration. The partnership there has never been stronger in the city of Lowell's history than it is today. And that's when partnerships are strong, this is what happens. Unique projects like this that are going to be transformative to the city, it's going to allow us to retain UMass Lowell graduates into high-paying jobs and city residents alike. So, all very exciting stuff. You will have council's cooperation throughout, you can bet on that, Chancellor. And I will add in the end, all taxable. So, that's good news for the taxpayers at home. Relief's on the way, as this council always promised, but in the form of great jobs, innovation, Sea Dog Brew Pub, I mean, come on. I can't wait, I can't wait. Thank you very much.
That got the biggest applause at our town, huh?
Really did. I'm so excited. You know, you know, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chancellor, for being here to make the presentation. I'm just excited, as Counsel Belangio mentioned, about everything. The Sea Dog, that's just icing on the cake, I think it's excellent to have that. And for those of us who are not that much AI savvy, so it's good to go have, spend time with friends and have, you know, physically in person, socializing in person. I learned a lot about this programming, and the manager has done a fantastic job updating the council and the neighborhoods about all the projects and developments going on. And I did mention some of these programs and developments at my party the other day. You know, we have Draper, we have Wexford, we have Bioversity. One of the things that I'm very excited about, I don't know if you can expand on a little bit more, the Space Center Australia. I mean, to have this type of programming development in Lowell really put Lowell on a global conversation about space exploration, I think, I just love saying that, space exploration right here in the city of Lowell. Could you explain, expand on that a little bit for some of the individuals that have not heard about it?
Yeah, so, the event we had shortly was a MOU signing with Space Center Australia. What they focus on is using basically a jet, a 130C jet, that goes up into the atmosphere, but it's in the low Earth atmosphere, but it's high enough that you can launch things that it doesn't have to overcome all of gravity in order to be able to launch things. So, it provides a great scientific platform to be able to launch things and take measurements of both looking out into the stars as well as looking down on Earth. And it's a lot cheaper and a lot easier than launching rockets. And so, that's why they see it as a great platform. It's a partnership with them and NASA, and part of it is because we have a center that was funded by Mass Tech also, related to small satellites, which enables companies to come and test their electronics, test their mechanical systems, because there's a lot of gravitational force when you launch, and you don't want to spend a lot of money launching something and have it fail because of that. And so, I think it's building off of our expertise at the university, in space, in engineering, in physics, and that's a big part of why they wanted to partner with us.
That's wonderful, that's exciting, and, you know, this is not the first time where Lowell is leading Massachusetts, and we're putting Massachusetts on the map this time. Thank you, Chancellor.
Counsel Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Having been a 1984 graduate and sitting in the Olson Building doing my Fortran programming when then the computers would crash, I would never have seen something like this. This is unbelievable. And this doesn't happen unless you have the leadership. And Chancellor, kudos to you and your team. This is something that, I mean, talking about a legacy, this is your legacy. And the city is with the Hamilton Canal, with the Draper now, I think that's a huge plus, but this is incredible, incredible feat. I thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. And I have to acknowledge again the mayor and the city manager who have been there every step of the way and, you know, knocking down those barriers and talking to the state folks in terms of helping support that.
They'll be buying the first round, right? Is that what you're telling me?
There you go.
Okay.
You talked about team, and after you know, I have some of my team here. Dr. Anne Maglia, Vice Chancellor for Research and Economic Development. She is my lead on the Link project, and of course, I think you all know DJ Cochran and Patty Coffey, who represents our government. Thank you.
Counsel Getche.
Mr. Mayor, for the record, I was in diapers when Counsel Dakota graduated from UMass Lowell. I'm still wondering how he's still here. Chancellor Chen, thank you again. I think the hardest part was when we first met and you told us to keep our mouths quiet as we left the room after you told us everything that was going to go on. I think when you're excited about this and you hear all the naysayers and say things that weren't true, but so far, you hit everything that basically our country should look at, job growth, bringing people to fair wages in working, in building up a city that really doesn't have any development in that area, and you took on that challenge, you and your staff. It's amazing to watch what we're going to see in this city, from baseball returning to all the innovation stuff, to people being paid a fair wage so that we can afford things in Massachusetts. I can't thank you and your staff enough, and I think it's amazing to be a graduate from UMass Lowell and remembering when you were down in the engineering department. So, I thank you again, and it's nice to see an engineer do all this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Getche.
Counsel Janes.
Thank you. I won't continue to tell everyone how old I was when Counsel Dakota graduated. This is so awesome to finally see in a way we can share with people. As Counsel Getche said, it was really hard to stay quiet when we first started hearing the rumblings of what was to come. And to see it in the map, you know, A, I love it because that's mostly District 4, which is where I live and where you live too. So, it's exciting to see this development in my backyard. There's a lot of great things that are about to happen, but what I appreciate most, more than anything, is how on this map you can see how this development integrates into the city. One of the complaints I heard when I first started telling people about this was, oh, the university's just going to build what they want, and it's going to be their own little thing. And I'm like, no, that's not what this is, and this map clearly shows, and everything else that you went through in this presentation shows how these buildings integrate in the community and are additive to the city and have great effects for our residents that are already here, as well as bringing new people or keeping people from moving on after their time with the university. I think there's some amazing opportunities that weren't even touched upon on this, that just come down to infrastructure and how we as a city are going to be able to support this and tie this in to the rest of our city, to connect it to downtown, to connect it to the various campuses of the university. I'm excited to be a part of those discussions and figure out how all that works because I love putting puzzles together, and this is a really fun one. So, thanks for all your efforts and all your team's efforts to get us to this point, and can't wait to see what's next. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Counsel Janes. I do have to make one comment because early this morning, we had a wonderful event with the LRTA to talk about one of the LRTA buses. It happened at the end of August, but we had the formal event today to talk about how that bus now runs the route that was overlapping with our orange line, which is an example, it's a small example, but it's an important one, right, of we don't need to have the LRTA bus and the UMass Lowell bus following each other down the street. And the idea that we can think together about how to more efficiently transport people around the city and into and out of the city, I think, is a big part of what we all want to tackle together. So, thank you.
Counsel Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to say congratulations, Chancellor Chen, and I certainly don't want to talk about age, but I go back to when the UMass Lowell was called Lowell Technological Institute. That was way back then, and one of the professors at UMass Lowell, which was the Technological Institute, was our landlord. So, we go back a long ways. I'm very proud of the development that took place, and I'm glad that we can finally talk about it and brag about it because it's something to crow about. When we talk about links, there's the link between the city and the university, there's the link for our veterans, there's a link for our graduating students, and they can make more money and become Lowellians. There's so much goodness here, so I'm very proud of everything that's happening. So, congratulations to your staff and Patty Coffey too. Very good. You have a good staff, so I'm not surprised that things are blooming. So, thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you, Counsel Mercia.
Counsel Moon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chancellor, for being here and surrounded by a great team. When we learn of the Link project, and we learn at the time that we have you as the first Asian-American female chancellor, we know it's the real deal because we know that you can make it work. We know that you not make it work by yourself, you're surrounded by a great team of people. And, you know, the city of Lowell do need additional revenue, and this is going to be future revenue for the city, helping our taxpayers offset that. That's a great thing. And also, a great thing is that to bring a young graduate to start family here instead of getting out of town. We appreciate you very much. We thank you for your continued partnership with the city. You are an exceptional leader, and you're going to inspire so many young women in Lowell and in this state. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. Congratulations. I think this started long before the Link. I think when I was first elected with as many of my colleagues, it started with your organization willing to have conversations, to include other organizations like the city of Lowell in decisions that you didn't necessarily have to. We worked out an agreement with the ballpark through President Meehan and the administration currently. And I still remember you went above and beyond and took your time to invite each and every individual, one of us, in for a conversation about what the university was thinking about the Link, what it looked like, and where you'd like to see it go. And here we are, many months later, and the map is on the board. It's coming to fruition, and that's a testament, I think, to all of the work envisioned that you and your team have had, and throughout it all, you've consistently been mindful of including and incorporating the community, and I think that's greatly appreciated. One of the highlights that I saw that I'm thrilled, and I believe Counsel Getche had touched on it briefly, is providing the biotech training for our residents that might not necessarily have other pathways because maybe it's not, they didn't have the opportunity to commit to a four-year degree, but having the opportunity in their backyard to do an eight-week or eight-month training, I forget what the timeframe is, but then be led into a field where they can really provide for their family and be proud of a new career path, that's priceless, and that's all you and your team's vision. So, again, thank you all very much and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Robinson. And yes, you're right, it goes back even way before that, right? Because if we think about it, the vision here starts from the vision that then Chancellor Meehan had when he started to look at what the land property, you know, what was available and what we could do for economic development. And I think the consistency of then Chancellor Meehan, now President Meehan, then leading on to Chancellor Maloney and to me, that consistency and that steadiness is a big part of why we are here today where we are. So, I think, and obviously, the steady support from the city has been helpful. And I agree with you, that the eight-week program to get people started and then have the companies keep paying to upskill them, we're really excited about that, helping the whole community be part of this. Thank you, Counsel.
Counsel Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to thank you for just your vision on this project and the partnership that you have with the city. I think most of us appreciate UMass Lowell and just the city itself that we can go to school from preschool to our PhD within the same city and how special that is to Lowell. But I think you're looking beyond that and saying, how do we keep people here? How do we, you know, make it a place that you want to stay once you're done with those programs? I mean, also, just the opportunities for students, I just think is an incredible thing, that you're looking for internship programs, it's so important right now for students that you're committing, you're doing this with Middlesex Community College as well. I'd love to see that expand down to the high school level. We're talking about starting new programs there. And again, I just thank you so much for all of this.
Yeah. Thank you, Counsel Scott. And yes, Phil Sisson, obviously, at Middlesex Community College has been a great partner in us thinking between the high school, right, Superintendent Skinner, and Phil Sisson at Middlesex and us, we can provide a company with whatever entry level all the way to CEO leadership that they'd be looking for, and I think that's a big part of the vision here. Thank you, Counsel.
Counsel Yum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations, Chancellor, your leadership and all the staff around him. I also want to congratulate our city leadership, starting from the mayor and manager Golden and his team working together with UMass Lowell. This is an example of powerful sustainability, urban development. I mentioned to Chancellor Chen that I wish that she and her team made presentation at the UAF7 in Toronto, Canada, to add a dynamic. So, now we have the big two puzzle together. Now, that Lowell is the first front-running city, and we are part of the UN SDG11, Sustainable Development Goal 11, and this Link project worked perfectly together by using housing, university, industrial partnership to drive economic and growth and then community revitalization. It is also, it's a, like I mentioned, the advance of SDG11, helping make Lowell more inclusive. inclusive, resilient, and sustainable while retaining local talent, strengthening our innovation economy. I just want to point out the critical part in the Link Project you're talking about. This is an $800 million project that will bring about 2,000 permanent jobs into the city and also adding 490 new housing units for the staff and the student who are going to the university without competing with the housing unit of the resident who live here all their life. So I just want to congratulate you, your team, and our city who work well together to make this really a reality, make Lowell become the second industrial revolution part of the UEF and SDG-11. Thank you again.
Thank you, Councilor Yehm. And obviously, with the mayor's leadership with the front-runner city, it's extremely complimentary, right? Because we can, the companies want to come here, they want to talk to us, but we need developers to build the next building, right? The third, the fourth, the fifth building. And the front-runner city provides an opportunity, we hope, for that to be more feasible because of the funding support. So, thank you.
Thank you. (applause) Thank you, Chancellor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr.
While we're under suspension of the rules, can I move to take 11.1 out of order, please?
Second. 7:00 PM, so we've got to do the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Moving on, Section 4, General Public Hearings, 4.1 orders to amend Form Base Code Parcels 2, 3A, 4, and 5, and Heather Canal Innovation District. We're open to hearing. All in favor? In favor? In favor? The portion of meetings closed. All in opposition? 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 The portion of meetings closed. Need a motion to adopt by Councilor Mercier, by Councilor Janess. Comments? Questions? Roll comments, clerk.
Councilor Malanga.
Yes.
Councilor Chau.
Yes.
Councilor Dakota.
Yes.
Councilor Getchier.
Yes.
Councilor Janess.
Yes.
Councilor Mercier.
Yes.
Councilor Noon.
Yes.
Councilor Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Ruck.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Councilor Yehm.
Yes.
That's 11 years.
Moving on, sorry, Councilor Robinson, go ahead.
I'd make a motion to take 11.1 out of order, please.
Second.
By Councilor Robinson, by Councilor Yehm, take petition, 11.1 out of order. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 11.1 miscellaneous. Espinal requests permission to address city council regarding incident at Lowell High School. Mr. Clerk?
On the petition, please.
Mi nombre es Felicita Espinal.
Good evening. We are, she's Felicita Espinal.
Yo tengo en la ciudad de Lowell 20 años trabajando comunitaria.
So I have 20 years working in Lowell for 20 years as a community.
So I'm a parent ambassador de la ciudad de Lowell.
I'm from the community of the committee of the City of Lowell.
En la primera carta que yo le mandé al distrito y también se la envía a ustedes, me explicó un poco lo que está pasando en la ciudad de Lowell, en la Lowell High, y en todas las escuelas de Lowell.
That's the letter that she wrote. I'm going to read it in English. So, my name is, this is your right? My name is Felicita Espinal. I'm the partner of the student in Lowell Public School. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to once again express a concern that many families share regarding the safety of Lowell High School. As another, as a mother, my priority is for my child and all students to attend school knowing that they are protected and safe. Sadly, we have seen act of school violence increase across the country. And as a community, we must take preventative measure before a tragedy occurs. For this reason, I respectfully request that the school committee review and implement more security at the main entrances of Lowell High as an important step toward strengthening safety. I truly believe that protecting our youth must be a priority, and many investment in safety and investment in their lives, their future, and the peace of mind of their families. Thank you sincerely taking this concern into consideration for your continued to work and support our students.
Quiero dirigirme hacia ustedes esta noche.
I want to talk to you about it.
Porque en 20 años que tengo en la ciudad de Lowell.
Because in 20 years that I'm living in Lowell.
Donde mis hijos estudiaron aquí.
Where my kids went to school.
He visto que siempre hay mucho problema.
I've seen that is so many problems in schools.
Han hecho una inversión muy hermosa en la Lowell High.
There've been many, very good investment in Lowell High School.
Pero no han incrementado más seguridad que es lo que necesitan nuestros niños.
But they have implemented more security at the entrance of the school.
Tengo siete nietos, que ya hay uno que entró a la Lowell High.
I have seven grandkids that they are in Lowell High.
Tengo muchos niños en diferentes escuelas.
I have so many kids from my family and friends in schools.
Solo le quiero pedir a ustedes que incremente más seguridad para nuestros niños en las escuelas porque están pasando mucho caso que yo estoy viendo en la calle, lo cual hay unos cuantos casos que están aquí ahora mismo en este salón.
There is so many cases that I've seen in schools from people that I know.
O sea que hay mucha violencia, los problemas entran en la escuela pero se salen afuera y debería haber programas también especiales para esos niños que están buscando problemas.
There is so much violence. And they should have, like, a program to implement, like, for the people who, for the kids who has mental problem like, you know, like in the other places.
Solo le pido eso, que no escuchen como padre. Hoy mínimo como 15, 16, pero queremos que nos pongan un poco de atención, que nos ayuden a tener más seguridad, que eso es lo que estamos pidiendo esta noche.
That's why we like to ask for help in our community, Spanish community. We are like Spanish people here, parents, kids. I have a testimony, too. Can I? Déjenme hablar un poquito. I have a testimony, too. I have a child. It's been eight years since he left Lowell. He said bye to me, he never come back to me. I haven't seen him for eight years. He's been, he was in high school, in Lowell High, and he was, he have a lot of bullying. And after that, a year after, he ended up in the mental hospital. He tried to kill himself three times. Thank God, they, you know, he has help and he didn't die. Thank God. But when he was one year in the hospital, when he get out of there, he said, I don't want to leave Lowell anymore, ma'am. I want to go, I want to leave. And he left, eight years. And he hasn't said bye to me, ma'am. He never called me back. So that's something that I have it in my heart. My heart is broke. So, we have another kid here that, the mother is there, she wrote a letter, too. So, her name is Jamel. She wrote the letter. Dear Lowell Public School Administration, I'm writing to express my deep concern regarding to an incident that occurred in early October, in which my child was attacked by a group of students outside Lowell High School building. That was in, that was in October. So, as a result of this attack, my child sustained several physical injury, including bruises on the face and swollen lip and bruised nose, missing tooth, and scratches on the arm and hands. So, he has some knitting. Also, the incident happened off school ground. I believe it highlights a serious safety concern that require immediate attention. So, she didn't happen at that moment, and she didn't have it, like me. As a parent, we trust that our children are safe, not only inside the school, but also around, around its, um, promise, especially during the arrival and dismissal, like when they coming out, in and out. So, I respectfully request that the district review the supervision and safety protocol around Lowell High School, including preventive measure, measure, to avoid conflicts of campus and to improve communication with family when such incident occurs, occur. That, thank you in advance for your time and your attention, all of you. I trust that the district will take the necessary action to strengthen safety and protect the wellbeing of our students. I'm sorry for my accent.
Speak better than I do. Yes.
Thank you.
Councilor Mercier, then Councilor Getchier.
Thank you very much for having us.
Yep, stay here, take it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It isn't easy to come out of your house, to come down here to talk like this. It isn't easy to be here. It isn't easy to address a problem. So, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Sean, the Assistant City Manager, I know Tom Golden stepped out, so I'm asking if a meeting could be convened between the mayor, I mean, the city manager, the chief Huedon from the police department, and Liam Skinner, whom, if I realized, I should have asked if he could stay and listen to this. This is a very serious issue. It probably don't affect me because my children are all grown up and out of high school, but this is scary. This is, you sending your child to have a bunch of bullies, you know, intimidate the children? This isn't right. So, something has to be done, some plan or something. I know we have the police when the kids get out of school, but it has to go a little bit further than that. And you know what I would wish? That you had those letters and you had a duplicate to give to them. Do they have the letters that you have? Do you have a copy of your own so that we could have something to go by? I think this is very important. This is a serious issue.
I didn't bring my letter, but, because I, I just came over to have.
Yeah, your phone number down somewhere.
And que le pongas tu número de teléfono ahí para.
Your names and your phone numbers so they could get ahold of you.
Oh, okay.
It's one thing to have a letter, but we got to know who. Do you have a copy for yourself?
Yes, she has.
Okay. Because this, any name with a phone number?
Que su telepuso el nombre y el teléfono de teléfono ahí.
Yes. Okay, thank you so much.
Very welcome.
Councilor Getchier.
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. Being the chairperson of the city council and also the school committee, I think it's, you're our voice. And I think this is something that goes to the school committee first if people are entering the building and there's a security breach. And I thought at one time they were going to do a security audit of all schools. I thought that's what the school committee was working on, but I don't know where that went or, I don't think that comes back. The function outside the building, I understand that. Do we still have, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager, do we have SROs in Lowell High School still?
Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through the council. Yes, we do, Councilor. We have, we do utilize SROs. And I was just speaking with, my apologies for having to step out, but I was talking with the Assistant City Manager. We will be setting up a meeting starting tomorrow to try to quell the situation.
I think it's, I think it's very concerning when you listen to someone, and we've just spent over $400 million in renovating the building, that system's not in place so that people can't just enter the building. I would understand if there's an athletic event and somebody was going to an athletic event, but there should be ways of locking down the rest of the building from the outside during an athletic event so that people are contained just to the athletic event area. But when you're watching people walk in, and I do this for a living, so I think it's imperative that people start looking at this, not only at Lowell High School, but even at the middle schools and other areas, especially like when you look at the STEM Academy. They should have, and I don't know if they do or don't, Mr. Mayor would probably know better than me, but why it got sent from the school committee to us and tell someone to come see us is, you know, it's something that should be done at their level. It's concerning that it said, go see the city council. I understand fights happen outside of schools all the time, but when you have resource officers there, it should be broken up pretty quick. Through you, Mr. Mayor, the manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through the council. In regards to the audit, I just received something, of course, that's the beauty of these things. The audit was completed, you know, we'll get to the report, but probably by the next, by the next meeting. However, that meeting will still happen to make sure that people feel safe going to school.
Did the city do the audit or did the school department do the audit? Who did the audit for the?
School department with the, with the police department, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, it would have been, it would have absolutely been the police department.
Okay, so it's completed for all the schools, so, I mean, I'm not asking to release that. I don't think that's smart to even release it to us. I think that's something that goes between the police department and stays within. I don't think it's something that should be released to even us. I just wondered if it was being done, that's all.
Yeah, a couple of things. We did a former Public Safety Subcommittee. The next meeting we have is the chief of police is going to be there to give an overview of the security procedures. And at the last school committee meeting that I was at, we approved two new security guards for Lowell High, in particular.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just think it's imperative that we look at it, but I don't think it's smart to release that to anybody.
Yes, that's why I grew frustrated with the school department and it came to us.
Okay.
That's my honest opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Yehm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank Felicia Eva for coming up and the rest of the resident, Maria, and Carmen, who come in. During my campaign knocking on doors, I met Fella. She showed me the video of the fight. And one phrase that she said to me that really stick in my head is that, you know, the city spent 400 million plus building a beautiful building, but no security. I can walk in without nobody asking. I asked her, did you go to the school committee and talked about what you plan to present at the council? And she mentioned, yes. However, she said, I do not get a feeling of the support, so that's why I'm coming to the council, council, and let the councilor know of what's going on at the high school. I mentioned to her that we may not be able to do anything but through the manager and our mayor who chaired the school committee meeting, that we might come up with a solution and work together. One thing that was, I'm thinking of, you know, we might work with the school to do a anti-bully campaign because my son, during the high school, he also was bullied. He was in the bathroom and two kids destroyed the bathroom, and they left. And then my son was the last one to leave, and he got sent home. And then I talked to my son, and he said, I'm willing to take the punishment from school, but I don't want to rat these two children, to this kid that did that, because I don't want to be beaten up by them, you know, throughout the year. So, he's willing to take the consequence, consequences. And this is really serious. Some kids don't go to school because they're being bullied and they're afraid to go back, and there's no support at home on top of that. Eva's son left the, left the city and went out because he doesn't want to stay in Lowell, and he went as, out of the, of the state. As a result, he's disappeared for the last eight years. So, this is a really story that hit home for parents, including myself. I thank you for coming up to speak, and we hope we can help you working with the school department. Thank you.
Councilor Robinson.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank the speakers. I'm not going to repeat everything that was said. I think we all are in agreement on the seriousness of getting this addressed, and I do agree. I think this kind of does fall on the purview in a lot of ways of the school side, school committee, and the school administration. Whereas it's, again, any bullying and stuff like that, I'd imagine would fall under the curriculum. I don't know what those protocols look like, but from what I'm hearing from residents here tonight, it doesn't look like those protocols are anywhere near where they should be. And so, I would greatly appreciate Mr. Mayor and Mr. Manager and your team to kind of really dial in on this and address it because I think it's just, anyone in the city can agree. It's, we're doing everything we can to provide the best possible learning environments, and this stuff has zero place to happen in any of those. So, thank you very much.
Councilor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really sorry that this happened to your family, first off. Back in 2013, when I was on the school committee, we actually had received a safety audit that had. a safety audit that had been done. Some of the findings in it were basically that the school could not be locked off because there were so many doors that were broken, or, you know, there were just too many entrances to begin with. They didn't have a way to make them keyed entrances. The building was just too old. It was part of the reason, between that and all the mechanical, excuse me, the mechanical failures, that we really pushed forward to ask for funding for a new high school. So we did that, and we've invested $400 million, a lot of money, into a new school so that the building can be locked and can be safe. And this is a real fear for students. They've, they've witnessed too many school shootings. I know my own children are afraid of people just walking into the building. I think it needs to be a priority. I don't know what the school does right now for safety protocol. Perhaps this was a one-off type of, you know, happening, I don't know. But through the mayor, perhaps you could bring that information back, what their protocols are for locking down the buildings at this point in time. And also, as far as incidents, incidences, this has been a long-going issue also, happening after school in downtown Lowell. It rolls out from the schools, things happen on social media, they all roll out, they end up in front of Subway, they end up downtown, they end up fighting. I mean, it's happened over and over again throughout the years that I was on the School Committee. I don't know if possibly we could look at adding, you know, the SROs coming out into the community for an hour after school, changing shifts or something. I don't know if that's outside their purview, if that's the Police Department, but it's an ongoing issue, and I really think just that, you know, our buffer, we don't have busing, so all the kids end up in downtown afterwards. I think it is within our purview to watch out for that, so, thank you.
Counsel Blanja?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I do wanna thank the speakers for coming down this evening. As Counsel Mercy has stated, if individuals come, parents come down and petition the City Council on an issue, there's a problem, and this is an important one. We didn't spend $400 million so students have to worry about protecting themselves rather than their education. That's why we spent the money. But I do appreciate the concerns my colleagues brought up about outside security as to a potential intruder getting into the school, which is very, very important. But this, this sounds to me like bullying and student-on-student activity, which is just as disturbing, which, to me, it sounds like we need to ramp up disciplinary actions within that high school. But I have the confidence that the manager will work with the chief, the School Department to rectify the situation. And Mr. Mayor was pleased to hear that you're adding, Mr. Mayor, the School Committee is adding on two security officers in the high school. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, and how many do they have currently, may I ask?
Six, seven.
Wow, okay, that's not a small number, so, all right, with additional security, with the manager working with the administration, let's rectify this problem for these individuals, these parents, and for students in the future, so that this BS does not continue. So I appreciate you coming down very much and making us aware of the situation. We're on it. We hear your complaints, and we're gonna take action. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gracias por estar aquí esta noche. Can't go too much further in Spanish, sorry, but I appreciate you being here. Hearing these stories is important, and I know that we will have the City Manager do everything he can. Security in the schools is of the utmost importance, so we will definitely keep this in mind and work with the manager, who will work with the School Department to do everything we can here, because we don't wanna see this happen to your kids or anyone else's. But, thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. A motion to exempt a place are filed by Counsel Young, second by Counsel Mercy, all the affairs are, opposed motion passes.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, could we, while we're under suspension, could we do 11.2 for Rockdale Avenue, please? I think the gentleman is here.
Counsel Mercy, 11.2, seconded by Counsel Gitcher, all the affairs are, opposed motion passes. 11-2, Ms. Lanias Francois Toca requests permission to address City Council regarding sale of land on Rockdale Avenue. Mr. Toca?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. My name is Francois Toca. I'm a long-term resident of Lowell, but currently I live in Woburn. I actually was very happy to hear about what is happening at UMass Lowell. I'm a graduate from UMass. I relocated in the city of Lowell in 1995. I went to UMass, I earned my bachelor's there, and also earned my master's degree at UMass Lowell. So I'm really happy to hear about what is happening with the school. I was actually also part of the Board of Advisors in 2010, so. But what brought me here tonight is, I mean, I've been, I've been here in Lowell, what brought me here tonight is about 13 Rockdale. Since I graduated from UMass, I have, still have ties in Lowell. I currently own two properties in Lowell, one on White Street and one on 13 Rockdale. I acquired the property on 13 Rockdale, that was back in 2014. When I acquired the property, I knew that there was a piece of land that is directly in front of my own property. I actually reached out to the city back in 2014, inquiring if that, because it was just abandoned and not really maintained, but that was serving by, as the parking for most resident in the area. So when I approached the city in 2014 about if the, I can purchase the land, I was informed that it cannot be sold, because parking is a major issue in the area, so that it's only parking where every resident can use. I came to learn in September, I actually appeared at the hearing, I think they filed the permission about the construction of the parking lot. When I appeared to that meeting, because it was the, a board's meeting, so I came, I wasn't aware that the land was actually sold. I thought that maybe it was probably one of the property owner like me, who is probably coming forward to see if he can improve the area. So actually, I was coming to that meeting to ask him to say, "Hey, I can also help to probably improve the area, because that piece of, I mean, I own 13 Rockdale, it's right in front of my, you know, my house, and I usually, even when we have tenants who are coming in the area, they always ask us, "Oh, where I'm gonna park the car?" We say, "Oh, you know what? This is a land here belonged to the city. It's first can first serve, everyone, anyone can park there." So when I came to that meeting, I learned that, because actually, when I had the opportunity to say something about it, I was speaking, not knowing that it was sold. So it's actually as the meeting evolved that I knew that the land has been sold. And the current owner, I think probably, owned probably one of the building there, and he have other building probably, you know, a little bit far away from actually where the land is. And during his proposal, what he proposed to do there is to build eight parking spots for, raise it for his untenants. That will be coming from different part of the city to park there, and, and a way to enforce, to make sure that it's only his tenant who park there, is gonna probably, you know, he said that he have contracted with the twine company, and if anyone, obviously, you come and park there, your car will be towed. Given that, that area is really, I think, if you have a chance, City Council members, or mayor, if you take, take a look at 13 Rockdale Avenue, there's no, most houses there do not have any private parking lots. So that piece of land was really like the main parking for the people who live in that, in that community. Having someone probably acquiring that land and privatize it, I'm not, I don't think it really benefit the neighborhood, and also probably also just drive other dwellers away, because you know what, when you're coming in to trying to know, to live there, if you know that there's no parking, at least knowing that it was city-owned property, that anyone can park there, I think probably that was an incentive, even for me or other property owners, to probably, you know, own a piece of property over there. So one of the thing that also brought me to really inquire about it is, I think by eminent domain, I'm also part of, you know, I sure I probably also be offered the opportunity if that piece of land was going to be sold, but I never knew anything about it. I'm not sure if there was any public notice about, about the sale. But regardless of that, I do believe for the fairness of the entire neighborhood, really having one person owning it is not really fair to the other property owners in the area, who all pay city to, who all pay taxes to the city. What I would have liked to see probably happen is that if the city could have developed the parking in that area, probably, even if there's a mirror there as a way of generating income, also not only it remain something that serve the community at large, but not just by one single individual. So that, the reason I really appeared before you to say that I'm really contesting the sale of that land, and I'm really asking that probably, I'm not sure at this time if there's any, something can be done about it, if that decision can be reconsidered, and really, probably if you have a chance to take a look at the neighborhood, you really say that really having someone to own that by himself and towing other people's car is not really the right thing to do. And that's why I'm really asking for you to look into it, and really appealing for the sale of that, to see if that can be revoked. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through the council. If it, if the council would like, we can have the solicitor's office take a look and find out through the yard sale process, that is typically goes directly to a butters, but we can have that discussion and have the solicitor contact the gentleman directly if that, if you wish that to happen.
Counsel Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager. I guess my, my only question is on this. So we followed all the procedures that we are supposed to follow as far as the yard sale process with the directed butters, I believe it is right now. And my, my only question, I guess, around this and particular lot, because I think of Back Central, is do we have considerations at all for leaving small lots like this as parking, municipal lots in the future, leaving that as city-owned property? That would be my only thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through the council. Counsel, when we're looking at all of the, the land that we do own throughout the city, sometimes there are, you know, these 2,000, 3,000 square foot lots, it's something that we're trying to, to be quite frank, not to be, not to own, not to have. So we put it out to a butters, typically through the yard sale. I believe the yard sale program is anything below, underneath 5,000 square feet, something that's not buildable, but could be green space, it could be parking, it could be a whole host of things. What the neighbors were using it as previously is something that, once again, we're looking at, that long list of properties that we own that end at 2,000, 3,000, anything under five, and what we try to do is just get them off, quote-unquote, get them off our books. It's not about the sale, it's not about, it's not about making any money, because typically they're not really worth too, too much, and it's probably being utilized, I can find out exactly, that's why I'm suggesting if the solicitor, you know, reach out directly to see if there's some, something we can work with here. But, once again, getting that Excel spreadsheet that all of you receive once a year or so with all these parcels that we try to, to have the city not own or not be responsible for, or quite frankly, not be liable for. That's kind of the goal through the yard sale program.
And not have to maintain, which is a big issue for the city as well. Like I said, I just didn't know whether or not there was some parcels that perhaps where they're very parked and restricted, we could look at possibly maintaining some of them.
Counsel, to answer your question, we could do that in the future, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Young?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know the parcel really well, and Rockdale Ave is a really narrow, small, narrow, one-way from Bower Street and then come back to, come back to Fletcher Street. That parcel of lot is right as you turn on Rockdale toward the, toward the Fletcher Street, and resident had been parking. And I, the question I have, did we send a, normally we send a letter to all the butters to let them know of the development, and that would be my question, and, go ahead.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through the council. To be in a butter, you have to be a direct a butter in the yard sale program. So, for instance, 1, 2, 3 lots, 2 is for sale, 1 and 3 are gonna be contacted. So there, once again, we're getting, we're trying to look at getting rid of, I don't even know if this is 2500 square feet of land. Under that, under yard sale, we're really trying to encourage the, the folks who are connected to it to, to purchase it and get it off, say, our books. I'm not suggesting that anybody else in the neighborhood hadn't been using it over the years. It's just one of those pieces that we're looking to, quote-unquote, yard sale.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm wondering what Mr. Toca was talking about, that is there any notification to the neighbor, but according to your comments that we sent out, the city sent out all the notices to all the butters to let them know of the sales. I'm just hoping that, you know, we can do something to help the neighbors, because a lot of resident who live around it, they use that for parking, and now this particular developer purchased, you know, too small to build something, but it's his piece of land, he's just not letting anybody else park, and he towed, as Mr. Toca was talking about. So I'm hoping that we can help, working together with Mr. Toca and our solicitor, and whoever bought it, and some sort of arrangement. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Manager?
Once again, Counsel, I agree with you. That's why my recommendation, if, if the council approves, is to have Mr. Williams reach out to the owner and reach out to the gentleman here to try to find out if something can be worked out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Manager?
Counsel Mercy, Counsel Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This situation came up a few times in the Back Central neighborhood, and when you say, offer it as the yard sale program, that means a butters on each side could buy into half of the middle, no, they could own a portion of that property, the two, the butters on each side. This is a situation where I wouldn't say yard sale program, I'd say similar to Back Central where they have the car condo project whereby the city owns a piece of land and offers it to the neighbors to park there. I'd rather have eight to 15 neighbors happy than to sell that lot to one person and have them monopolize that, and everybody's unhappy. We don't wanna do that in the city of Lowell, so I think we're gonna work with you to help you out. This is the City Manager. He's gonna make good things happen, okay?
Thank you very much.
I'm sure of it. Thank you. I hope so. Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. So the yard sale program doesn't automatically split the lot to each abutting property owner. The option is provided, we ask people if they're interested in the property and if they'd be willing to entertain sharing it, if, if we ended up hearing from both, but we don't always hear that, and it's not automatically offered that way.
Sure, you don't always hear that. I understand that.
Yeah, and so in some instances, in many instances, the sale ultimately goes to, you know, somebody who responds to it. In this particular case, it was a respondent who owns property and has multi-unit development on that street, and so this parking is for tenants that are living on the street, and, you know, it's, 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 it's the, one of the abutting property owners that responded to, to the yard sale program.
Yeah, I don't think, it'd be very popular if one person bought that and monopolized that land, and everybody had no place to park. So it would be nice to offer it as a car condo situation. Thank you.
Counsel Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This property didn't ring a bell for me, so I did a quick Google and, and found a couple of things. First thing I found was that it looks like there was a vote in May of 2019 to declare this property surplus by the City Council. That was before most of us were here. And it, and found something else that talked about the planning, or, sorry, the ZBA discussion on September 22nd, which referenced this property having been sold last September. So I don't know if we're too far down the track to, to change anything at this point, but at the very least, I think this makes a cautionary tale for the next time we do one of these. I think we might wanna do a little more understanding of, of the facts on the ground, and, you know, possibly including more discussion in the neighborhood before we move forward with some of this stuff to prevent something like this from happening again. I was thinking of the car condos in Back Central as well, which were mentioned earlier. Those are crucial to, to people being able to, you know, survive and have a place to put their car in Back Central. So I wouldn't wanna see So I wouldn't want to see something like this happen, happen there or in some of our other dense areas in the neighborhood. So just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. Yeah, this, this particular issue, I just hope that moving forward, we, Sunavu, I know we do have one or two small parcels over there, as we're well aware, parking is gold. And so anything we can do, I mean, even if it's something to the point where the city charges residents a very minimal fee to utilize that parking space, and that account is just utilized to pay maybe a subcontractor in the winter with a small one ton to plow it and maintain it for us, something very inexpensive, but something that offsets any expense that the city might incur as a result of the snow removal, say. Anything we can do that's surplus property in Sunavu, I'm sure the neighbors would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything else? Motion to refer to the solicitor by Counsel Yam, by Counsel Robinson, on the fair say aye, opposed motion passes. Getting to the motion list, 5.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, can I please make a motion to take 6.4 out of order?
Yes, thank you for reminding me, Counsel Robinson. 6.4 out of order, second by Counsel Noon, on the fair say aye, opposed motion passes, 6.4 is the appointments to the Hunger and Homeless Commission. We have two this evening. Jenna Gibbo, term shall expire 10/28/2007, and Taylor Connelly, Hunger and Homeless Commission, term shall expire 10/28/27 as well. A new motion to approve by Counsel Gitchia, second by Counsel Scott.
Just a motion to accept.
All in favor say aye, opposed motion passes. We do have this Gibbo here tonight. Say a couple of words.
City Manager Golden and Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you for this opportunity. I promise to work on behalf of the city of Lowell to help make a positive impact. In 2006, I lost my mother to addiction, so this has become a personal mission of mine. Most of you in this room know me, and I promise I won't let any of you down.
Okay, returning to the motion list. 5.1, Counsel Dakota, request city manager to proper apartment review and implement traffic calming measures on Sanders Ave, second by Counsel Chow, Counsel Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did get a call from a couple of constituents on Sanders Ave. In the last few years, a couple of younger families have come in with some children, and Sanders Ave is used as a cutoff to get to Lincoln Parkway a lot of the time. So if we could take a look at that. And also, I was knocking doors today, and I was on Wedge Street, and a couple was on the porch with me, and right around Rodoro, car must have been coming 50 miles an hour. She goes, the lady I was talking to said, this happens all the time. So if we could have Ms. Altman, so if I need to amend this or not, but Wedge at Rodoro, right around there. Thank you.
On the fair say aye, opposed motion passes. 5.2, Counsel Gitchia, request city manager provide the city council with a detailed report on all expenses for the front run of the city, including program, travel, any of the expenses, second by Counsel Yam, Counsel Gitchia.
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. Mr. Mayor, just looking at the UNIS report that's posted every month and seeing that 74% of it is already used, it's just, we'd like to just see a breakdown. I know that soon you're going to be putting a board up together on the city's website, so that's sufficient enough for me. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Counsel, you're correct, the dashboard that we are looking at, that'll be a little bit ways out, but I'm thinking, if you give me a little latitude, Counsel, I'm thinking about November 7th, November 14th, sometime, someplace in that area, we'll populate our city website with everything that's been happening with the, with the front run of the city.
Do you think we have enough in that fund to cover? Because right now we're 74% already exhausted. That was towards the end of September, so.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
All in favor say aye, opposed motion passes. 5.3, Counsel Gitchia, request city manager provide the city council with an outline of responsibilities of the city to notify the boards of parks when changes are planned for the parks, second by Counsel Robinson, Counsel Gitchia.
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. As of recently, there are questions on the RFP for Calory, and now there's questions on parks being different usage happening to each one, it's being switched over. What is the city's obligation, I guess, to the board of parks? Is it board of parks oversight? Like, last time we were told you had to take votes for different usages for different parks. So if you could just get us a report back, that'd be good. Thank you.
All in favor say aye, opposed motion passes. 5.4, Counsel Gitchia, request city manager provide the council with the current list of all positions currently funded by ARPA, funding in all part-time positions currently being funded, second by Counsel Mercier, Counsel Gitchia.
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. This is something that we've gone over a couple of times, and I'm just waiting for the reports back on these positions. It's just when you're looking at inflation and we're looking at the projections of the economy coming through and government funding and what we're going to get from state and everything else, and I don't know what our revenues are right now, so it's something to just keep in, yeah, I know it's too early. If we can just look at it and see what, what is out there and what are our costs, that's all. Thank you.
All in favor say aye, opposed motion passes. 5.5, Counsel Gitchia, request city manager update the city council on the parking lot paving at the Bartlett School, second by Counsel Janess, Counsel Gitchia.
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. This was really reported at the joint subcommittee facilities that just took off. If there's a way that we can have your opinion on this and not just someone else's, just in writing to us on, you know, the outline, because everybody has their opinions, but I want to make sure that the management team is on the same page as everybody else with where we're going with this. Thank you.
All in favor say aye, opposed motion passes. 5.6, Counsel Mercier, request city manager have traffic enforcement place a radar speed detector to track speeders on newly paved East Merrimack Street, and if excessive speed is shown, play speed humps to slow down traffic, second by Counsel Noon, Counsel Mercier.
Sometimes when you do your best to make things happen, it reverses itself and more problems happen. This is a street, East Merrimack Street, that I used to cut through once in a while, and there were so many ruts and holes in the street, and I went so slow, da, 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 da. Now that it desperately had to be repaved, it looks gorgeous. I'm not saying I speed, but many people do, and it's creating a problem with the residents there. So maybe it would be nice to verify the speeding through that machine that counts up the speeders, and then maybe we could, if we're lucky enough, to have some speed bumps, speed humps. And I see them on Fairmount Street, I see them on Douglas Road. It's very good, because it certainly slows me down, I'll tell you that, but I shouldn't say that, but I'm telling you, it's a good thing to have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. No good deed, council goes unpunished. We talked about this, Counsel Blancha. That road looks wonderful. Thank you very much, Ms. Altman, for moving that along. This was one of those opportunities that we had to attack at the last minute, so we figured we would do that next year in the spring, just for the edification of our residents. We will be going back in there, putting a final coat in, and Ms. Altman is already looking at the speed humps in that area. However, I've just spoke with Mr. Machado, he'll be talking with folks out there to increase step, the step programs, to kind of remind everybody, in all truthful, in all seriousness, it is a neighborhood. Let's, you know, operate appropriately. So if step needs to be out there to remind people of that, as well as the science will make that happen.
Thank you.
You know, no good deed, as you recall.
No good deed goes unpunished, no doubt about it.
So we're just a little bit ahead of, we had that opportunity, we jumped on it to take the original binder coat, the mill and overlay, I want to make sure I have that correct, Ms. Altman. And then next, the beginning of next year, we'll be attacking this, as well as the sidewalk on the Riverside, I believe that to be true. Okay, we're still working on that, I apologize.
River Cliff.
But we're also going to be looking at the sidewalk in that area as well.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you.
Counsel Blancha?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do appreciate Counsel Mercier putting in the motion on this, and the street looks beautiful. And I want to thank the administration and traffic engineer Liz Altman for putting this on the rush list. It was initially supposed to start next year, but we got a jumpstart on it this year, and I think that's great. But, yes, so East Merrimack Street's a huge cut through. To avoid Andover, Nesmet, that intersection, they go right down River Cliff to East Merrimack and avoid a lot of traffic, and it is a huge cut through once again. But I just wanted to plug Counsel Mercier's motions for the speed humps. It would certainly be warranted at this location, Mr. Manager, so please do your best that that happens. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. Speed bumps, I guess, they've grown in popularity. I think the installations, people, for the most part, we do get a couple complaints here and there, but for the most part, I think people are seeing the outcomes that we're looking for with this. I just ask through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager, when we start talking budget for next year, can you please lay out a couple options for the council? Because I think we are seeing an increase in requests, and so we have some options when we go through that process to see what is it going to cost us now that we have our hands around installation costs and all these other things. I'm sure the traffic engineer has some locations in mind. But I'd also still like to see, maybe, so it was brought to my attention, for example, on top of 6th through 10th on Beacon, we're starting to see increase in speeding, high pedestrian area that way. When you come up to the top of 6th, take that left, down towards 10th, that stretch. Maybe it doesn't lend itself to speed humps over there, but maybe we look to bump outs on the sidewalks in Kerbin, and that, that kind of can serve as twofold. Maybe that can allow us to put shade trees or plant the boxes or do something different there to keep the aesthetics of that particular section of the neighborhood. So I just think to give us some options when we start going through the budgetary process as the traffic common proposals, and how much should we anticipate having set aside for areas that pop up throughout the fiscal year? Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, sure, Counsel Gitchia, I can tell you, how many people come to us for new streets, and the first thing we both say is, get ready for a speedway, right? You know, and so Mr. Manager, you have to, you know, set the budget, speed humps in for a new street being paved going forward, so. All in favor say aye, opposed motion passes. 5.7, Counsel Mercier, request city council name Edson Cemetery Chapel in memory of Gerard P. Jerry Logue, as voted upon by the Cemetery Commission.
Second.
Second by Counsel Yam, Counsel Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Cemetery Commission voted to name the Edson Cemetery Chapel in memory of Gerard P. Jerry Logue. I would like to take a roll call vote on this motion to reinforce and support the vote taken by the Cemetery Commission and refer this vote, this joint request, to the ultimate committee, which is the Committee of Naming, because even though the Cemetery Commission supported it and will take a roll call vote, and I don't know how it couldn't pass, but it would solidify going then to the building naming subcommittee. Jerry was appointed to the Cemetery Board and became chairman in 1997. He was on the board until the day that he died, and in my opinion, he deserves this honor for all the time that he put into the cemeteries. And so I'm very honored to present this and ask for a roll call vote. Thank you.
Counsel Gitchia, do you want to speak?
The chapel, we still have a naming committee, don't we? Yes.
Monument Committee, Monument.
Monument Naming Committee, that one.
Gitchia, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Ruck. I'm sorry.
With that thought in mind, some of my colleagues are confused, as well as I am too, as to who, who's on that committee? Who does that, is that committee made up of? The Monument Committee, so could we, in the next packet, have a list of those people on the board? All right, thank you. Is that all right? Thank you.
You have another shot, Counsel Gitchia?
I was, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say, anybody who ever met Jerry Logue, he had met a special person who cared about a lot of people, and he deeply cared about our city. And I want to thank Counsel Mercier for bringing this forward. Jerry was a really unbelievable Lowellian, and this is a great honor for him and his family. Thank you.
Roll calls, Clark.
Counsel Blancha?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Dakota?
Yes.
Counsel Gitchia?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Mercier?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Ruck?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yam?
Yes.
Levine?
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Counsel Noon, 5.8 and 5.9 together. 5.8, Counsel Noon, request city manager provide an updated plan for the Transitions Living Center. And 5.9, Counsel Noon, provide the update for plan for Ending Conference Center in the Lowell District Court, second by Counsel Robinson, Counsel Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that not just the managers, but the previous administration has been, you know, meeting with the official at the Lowell Transitional Living Center, discuss a number of issues, ongoing issues, complain for the facility. I also know that, you know, we try to in doing what we're doing to have a balance between the economic growth in that area with the social responsibility for those who need help. You know, we see next door now, there's a building, you know, there's going to be a housing unit there, there's some business there, but some of those businesses there is not really sustained, so to speak, due to the, you know, the, I think, tasks or the work that the official at the Lowell Transitional Living Center, you know, people out during the day, you know, in the morning, they're out, they just really not much control there, not much, you know, orders, so to speak. So I'm wondering if you can update us ongoing discussion with the official at the, that facilities, and what plan they have going forward, and how can we help them, right? With that motion, that is with the Lowell Transitional Living Center. With regard to the ICC and the Lowell District Court, I know that our Assistant City Manager Joanna Byrosis has had ongoing talk with DCAM, you know, the directors, you know, Adam Beckey, about the Lowell District Court site and the plan forward. I also see that the ICC is crucial going forward, as you indicated, that I see this as two kind of lot, sort of, the ICC itself and the service parking lot in front of it. I know that recently you have met with the Secretary of Housing and State official about the future of ICC, right? So, you know, I'd like to see if you can update us, you know, with what being discussed, and what's the future plan for the project, ICC and the Lowell District Court together, sort of, you can call it, you did call it a triangle kind of plan, right? So, and what role, if any, what input will the city have, you know, when the building being available for redevelopment, knowing that the emergency housings should be end by sometime either July or somewhat of next year? You know, the ongoing discussions of this is, update us on this is very important, because this project certainly is going to help the Lowell Dock, the Lowell Dock parking facility revenue, you know, instead of dipping into the general revenue every years, the last couple of years, one or more million dollars, you know, from the general revenue. With the project, this project, it's going to help the Lowell Dock parking facility and will help the revenues and probably help us in the long run with the downtown as well, because I see this too as an important gateway to downtown. So please update us on all those projects going forward when you have it. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Councils, I'd be excited to update you in regards to 5.9. I did meet with Secretary Augustus just last week, and we're having this discussion in regards to what is happening in that area. We're looking for an identity, not to take away from the downtown, but something to kind of capture. So I'd like to ask the council if you have an idea. Once again, we're looking at the Lowell District Court as well as the ICC, and our partner with UMass, our partnership with UMass Lowell was strong enough that Mr. Corcoran was with me during that discussion with the secretary and his entire staff. So they understand fully that we're looking to make a go of this. Now, talking about, this is just an update as far as what's happening with the Ending Conference Center. We'd agreed to December of 2026. That, that date is fluid right now, and it might be fluid going backwards, not forward. So we're still working with the Healey administration. Secretary Augustus was very candid about that. I'm not sure at this point in time if the ICC will close in July or December. I'm not sure at this point in time if the ICC will close in July or December. So that is still in flux as we speak. However, with UMass Building Authority as well as UMass Lowell, we have full cooperation that we're really looking in that area, the triangular area, which I've looked at from the Lowell District Court site, which that RFP is out and will be back due September 20th-ish, 25th, maybe. The case is, we've gotten tremendous response thus far, or people are very excited about this. But we also have two other sites over there, one being the ICC itself and what I've referred to as ICC2, which is the parking lot. Thank you very much, Council Noon, for bringing up the fact also that the Lowell Locks Canal would be a huge benefit in that area if we were lucky enough to reinvent that area. I'm sure Mr. Ryan from our parking department, if we had introduced 200 cars over there, you know, you're looking at another quarter of a million dollars of potential revenue, 300 cars, a little bit more. So this is one of those pieces that we've been working on, and I'm very excited to bring you a full update on that in probably in the coming month or so. But that's where we're at right now. But I do implore the council that if there's an idea or a thought or an identity, not just downtown, but, you know, something to that effect. I know some of my friends who have traveled over to Canada, they really have become very good at identifying parcels or identifying areas where people can have a discussion about excitement that's happening in that area. So I'll leave you with that, but I'm very excited to identify it, rename it, look to see what happens. The secretary knows exactly what we're trying to accomplish and has committed his office's, you know, help with DPD. Quite frankly, I probably shouldn't say this, but said one of the best DPDs that he's been working, that he's worked with in a long time. So we're very excited. This is just yet another piece that is going on in the puzzle that we have with Link, with Front Runner City, with this new, this new identifying this, this, this area. So be excited to give you a further update, probably four to five weeks or so. Thank you.
Council Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, thanks to Council Noon for bringing these two items forward, two things we've talked quite a bit about. But I just wanted to interject a thought on 5.8, which is just something I've heard from a lot of folks recently. For you, Mr. Manager, and maybe this is something that can be referred to the Hunger Homeless Commission or somewhere else, but the concept of some kind of day facility options for the clients of the LTLC, someplace where they can go and do their laundry, meet with caseworkers, kind of, that kind of thing. I don't know if that's a service that LTLC might be looking to offer, if there's another partner who might be looking to do something like this. I have no idea where something like this might happen, but it's just something I've heard quite a bit about, and so I just wanted to bring it to your attention and just kind of put it on the list of things to look at as a potential avenue for improvement here. Thank you.
If I could just do a quick, quick from here, bouncing off exactly what Council Janess just said, the best place, you know, for the shelter, I think would be where services are available, including anything you just spoke about, Councilor. Mr. Manager, I would ask, and hopefully the council agrees, that we write a letter to the State House, including the Governor's Office and Lieutenant Governor, requesting that Tewksbury State Hospital be looked at as a possible area for the shelter to be relocated. Everything is there at that facility. You know, we have been offering in the past to assisting in building a shelter as well out there. It would be new, and other services are around it. I mean, you can get your social security card, you can get an ID there, you can do your laundry there. Everything is on campus at one site. Mr. Manager, I ask you to politely put in the letter us taking in the refugees and the migrants at the ICC over the past couple of years, all the things that we have done as a community that other communities have not, again, in a very nice way, and say this would be a nice compromise going forward. You would give those that need it a much better, newer facility and a place where all the services that Council Janess spoke about and others have mentioned in the past could be apprehended. So I would make that in the form of a motion, seconded by Council Gitchia. Maybe you want, Council Yem, go ahead. Sorry, Council Robinson first and Council Yem. All set? Council Yem, you got anything? All set? All right, good. Okay, all right, I appreciate it. All the fair say aye opposed, motion passes. 5.10, Council Janess, request city manager, Department of Department, evaluate the potential of automatic pedestrian intervals at intersections with frequent pedestrian crossings, particularly those with accessibility challenges, assessing the crossing buttons, seconded by Council Noon, Council Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This came up in a few different conversations. The specific intersection I was thinking of as I was typing the word on this is the intersection of Market and Dutton. It's impossible to hit any of the crosswalk buttons without navigating dirt, gravel, snow, ice, depending on the time of the year. I know at one point there was, there was a plan to potentially redo that intersection that may have included some of this. I know the bridge needs to be replaced, et cetera. But this was just something I was thinking that might be something we can do that would help at that intersection and probably others as well. I know we do have some intersections set up to do this already, the intersection of Appleton and Gorham, for instance, that has automatic pedestrian intervals. So, you know, if we can do that in places that are difficult to get to the buttons or if there are no buttons, I think it would be a benefit. Thank you. And I was thinking really just like the busy times, whether that's morning commute time, even, I don't know how flexible the controllers are, or if it's even a good idea, but I'm sure we'll find that out. Thank you.
All the fair say aye opposed, motion passes. 5.11, Council Janess, request city manager, Department of Department, investigate the lifting, lighting on the paths leading to and from the Lowell Locks Garage Development Improvement Plan, seconded by Council Noon, Council Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ties in nicely with the earlier motion from my colleague. This was something I've heard from neighbors that just coming and going in the evening around the paths with lower locks, whether you're going out the back towards the bridge that goes over toward, towards Middlesex, or even just the paths coming out into the, into the parking lot of, of the ICC. The lighting is rather old at this point. I don't know if it's all functional or not. That would be the first thing to check, but if, if we can do things to improve it and make people feel better about using those paths, I would appreciate it.
All the fair say aye opposed, motion passes. 5.12, Council Janess, request city manager, investigate the feasibility of creating a QR code-based registration and reporting system for publicly accessible trash receptacles in the city, seconded by Council Gitchia, Council Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I spoke with you briefly about this after last week's meeting, Mr. Manager, but basically we just give an, an easy path for people to be able to report, hey, this trash barrel's overfilled, this trash barrel's broken, whatever. And I was thinking more than just a sticker, if it could be something durable so it doesn't get scratched out, but the idea would be that each barrel would have a unique code, so you would know that barrel 729 is overflowing, okay, we have that documented, we know where that barrel is, so it needs to be emptied. Over time, it'll give you data that, okay, you know, we have to empty this barrel every Thursday, maybe we need to add another barrel nearby or change our pickup schedule, et cetera, et cetera. I think we start small. If we have some known problem barrels, you know, start with those, see how this goes. If it works, we can expand it. I was thinking we could even work with our partners, UMass Lowell, Middlesex, everyone else who has permanent public trash barrels, kind of implement the same thing so that, you know, somebody has a way to report this, even if it comes to us, we know we can call the National Park and say, hey, your barrel's overflowing. This is the 12th time we've gotten this complaint this year. Can you guys add another barrel or pick it up more often? Things like that. But I think start small, see how it goes, and go from there. Thank you.
All the fair say aye opposed, motion passes. 5.13, Council Janess, request city manager, Department of Department, prepare a parking facilities capital master plan, seconded by Council Robinson, Council Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This came out of conversations I had with, with the CFO, and we were talking about some of our aging garages, namely, the Roy Garage and the Lower Locks Garage are both approaching or over 50 years old at this point. I don't know how long one can expect to get out of a concrete garage, but it feels like we're getting close on some of these. So I think it's important that we, we build out a plan and start knowing where we're going before we get there with some of this stuff. I think with the, the Parking Enterprise Fund kind of being on the hook for these funds or for these expenses, it's important to, to build a plan. Thank you.
Council Gitchia?
Mr. Mayor, don't, through you to the manager, don't we already have a capital plan, master capital plan in place?
Mr. Manager?
Yes, Council, we do. I think that we're just looking at maybe a more robust capital plan. We've been spending a lot of money in our parking garages as of late, but I think maybe more robust is what the council might be talking about.
No, no, I agree. I was just, I thought we did have one. I thought we saw that. Okay, thank you.
All the fair, Council Robinson, you know, you hand up? No. All the fair say aye opposed, motion passes. 5.14, Council Janess and myself, request city manager, Department of Department, prepare an analysis and options to the council regarding reducing the volume of discarded mini liquor bottles littering our city, and second, not needed, Council Janess, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This conversation you and I had, a conversation I've had with many folks about the prevalence of the nip bottles that are all over our streets, our parks, everywhere. Just wondering what options we have to maybe try to rein that in. I do know that there are some public health concerns that might be, might come up here if we're just outright banning them, you know, anyone with a physical alcohol dependency could, could cause problems for them. So it's just something we need to consider and think about as we go through this process. So I would like some input from, from the Health Department on this and what might be a good path to walk here. But I'm just really trying to figure out what our options are so that we can, we can stop spending so much money cleaning it up all the time. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, Council, I'd be very brief. Yeah, it's, it's nip bottles, Mr. Manager, that I think we're all aiming at. We routinely see them right next to the discarded needles in, in public parks and places, so there's something that can be done in that regard. Council Scott, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had made a motion several years back, actually supporting some legislation that was out there as far as, it was, some of them banned nip bottles completely across the state, and some of them tried to put a bottle deposit on, on the nip bottles. Either one of them seemed to make a lot of sense, and I know that, I'm pretty sure we sent a letter of support at that time. I don't necessarily support doing it just at the city level because I feel like we're hurting our businesses where people can just go to the next town and, and purchase them there. But if there's any current legislation, I mean, something that we can look at possibly, you know, expressing more support for, I think would be a good idea. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very, very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Council, that expansion of the bottle bill has been something that, I can't speak today to, you know, the thought process, he can heal, but the expansion of the bottle bill is something that's always been before the legislature, and it just never seems to gain any traction, simply because it's pushing people north. But if we were to ban, I mean, the, the opportunity or the, the solution to this is to ban them as other towns have done.
Local option.
Local option. So that would be something that the council, if they wish to look at or, or host a banning. I mean, we could send letters in support of a nickel, but just knowing what the legislature in the past has done with this, I don't know if there's going to, that's going to change anytime soon. Sports bottles, you know, I don't believe, Gatorade bottles, et cetera, have a nickel on them, maybe they do now, but I don't, I don't believe so. Some of those don't. So I think it'd be up to the council at this point to either bring, send letters to the, to the legislature saying we support this, or an outright ban of them in our city.
Yeah, so even if I guess we can get our, what our options would be, I guess, you know, I don't think they've expanded it to the water bottles because, you know, you can walk through the neighborhood and you can see there's no cans, but there's water bottles everywhere, Gatorade bottles and nip bottle, nips everywhere. So for me, it seems to make sense that we, you know, put some type of bottle bill in place to, to stop it and encourage people to either recycle them or other people to pick them up. So, thank you.
All the fair say aye opposed, motion passes. Moving on, six communications from the city manager, 6.1A, Back Central Neighborhood, Councils Janess and Scott.
I'm sorry about that. Motion Response A, Back Central Neighborhood. Oh, so I would just like to thank our, our parking director, Terry Ryan, yeah, this evening, right? Yeah. He came to the Back Central Neighborhood meeting, he met with the neighbors, he gave all of the options to them, what they're doing around UMass Lowell, around the acre neighborhood, and he's put it all out there for them, told them that he would come back and meet with them and discuss it. So I guess right now it's really in the neighbors' hands to decide what they really want to look at. I do know commercial park, commercial vehicles parked on the roads is still a, kind of like a thorn in their side right now that they still want addressed, but just, so thank you for his efforts for bringing this forward.
Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Exactly what Council Scott said. Thank you to Terry Ryan, all the work your team's done here, and just looking forward to that next discussion at Back Central. Thank you.
Motion Response B, Midway Flight Landings, Council Gitchia?
Thank you, Mayor Rock. I do have a couple of questions for Chief Sharon, if he's available. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome, Chief. You know, thank you for the report, but, you know, I called around on this issue because it, it seems like we waste a lot of our resources up at Lowell General. You know, I asked only about Lowell General, but we got the other eight landing spots, which I understand why you have to have somebody there because it's just brush and everything. But when you look at Lowell General, I spoke to somebody at Leahy Hospital, and they don't have fire response there every time, or even ever. They said that they used to have an ambulance that used to go there and then bring transport when they had to. But in your report, it's, why would Lowell Fire have to provide numerous services to Lowell General to ensure the area is safe for rotary aircraft landings and takeoffs? Wasn't this area designed for that and maintained by the hospital?
That is correct.
Okay, so, so I guess the reasoning you have throughout the whole response is that the reason why we sent them there is to make sure these areas are okay for the landing of it. I'm just trying to figure out why we have to do this for Lowell General and why we're not being reimbursed.
Well, I can't tell you why we're not being reimbursed for it, but as to the reason why we respond there, it is based on being able to protect the crews and the patients should the helicopter crash.
Well, I mean, has there been a helicopter crash in the city of Lowell?
Not that I'm aware of.
And I don't know any other community that does this, and I spoke to all the others. I understand the other eight areas you're talking about, but to me, no other community does this, and we spoke to Burlington, Leahy Hospital, and multiple others that don't do this. If you go in Boston, they're on the rooftops, and we don't have firefighters climbing the rooftops to make sure that there's a safe landing in case of a helicopter crash. And I just don't understand why we're using Engine 10 in this, in this way. We have many services that are needed in that area that we need them at that point, and they're waiting there for hours. I'm hoping that, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager, that we can make this change and not do this, because we haven't ever had one, no other community does it, and it seems to me like we're using our resources over there in an area where it doesn't make any sense, and they're valuable resources when we do this over 100 times a year. Thank you.
Motion Response C, IPM requirements, Council Robinson?
Thank you. Thank you to Ms. Byas Rose and DPD, as well as Lloyd DeJesus and Mr. Fuller. It's encouraging to see that we do have a path forward to incorporate this, and I'd like to make a motion to refer this to a joint Subcommittee of Rules and Environmental, so maybe we can flush out, because I know there is Ms. Dawson, Joanne Dawson, and she's provided, many communities have implemented this, and she has some really solid examples, so I'd love to work through it in a Subcommittee and maybe try to come back with a recommendation to the body. So that'd be a joint Rules and Environmental Subcommittee.
Council Robinson, seconded by Council Noon, all the fair say aye opposed, motion passes. Motion Response D, EDU's, Council Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the report. I'd like to refer this to the Housing Subcommittee. Thank you.
Seconded by Council Robinson, all the fair say aye opposed, motion passes. Motion Response E, Elm and Chapel Streets, Council Janess?
Thank you, Miss Mayor. I appreciate the response, and I appreciate that we're looking to do something. I know neighbors are still frustrated in the area with, with the crashes that happened there. Every time something happens, I get pictures on my phone, I send them to you. You know, we talked a lot earlier about traffic calming in other areas, adding speed bumps, this, that, and the other. It's really frustrating that we can't do that here. You know, I, I know changing Elm Street to one, one way might help here. Is this, I suppose this is a question for Ms. Altman, is this change one of the ones that you'll be discussing at your open house in, at the senior center? That's October 29th, am I right? Tomorrow night, what time? Okay, so if anyone's interested in discussing with changes of, potential changes to streets in Back Central Highlands acre, the Traffic Department is... in Back Central Highlands, acre, the Traffic Department is holding a open house discussion at the Senior Center tomorrow night from six to eight. I would encourage neighbors to, to come down, learn what we're looking at, what our options are and what we might be able to do. This intersection is, is probably top five of ones that I get complaints about in my district. So I'm gonna keep bugging you on it. And I, I don't know what we can do, but I hope we can figure something out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just echo Council Janess, Janess's comments about it being one that I hear about more than a lot of other intersections for safety concerns. I'm thankful that the indent in the road was fixed and the localized paving was done by, by the city. And that was greatly appreciated. But I do just have one question for the Traffic Engineer. The section here that says the intersection was previously reviewed for the installation of all ways stop control due to the impact on the adjacent roadway system implementation, it's basically not recommended. I'm just curious what exactly that means, impact on the adjacent roadway, what, what the concerns are there? Because that's what people are looking for at that intersection.
Hi, if I may. The, the volume on tra, of vehicular traffic on Elm Street, my concern is that we would have the situation similar to Aiken and Perkins where you would back up the queues at that all way stop back to Chapel and back to Gorham on either side. And that would then cause some issues in the area. So that is my concern with, with putting an all way stop in that location.
And could that?
It is, it is, site distance is constrained there and I, I do understand that. It would be worth a conversation with the emergency services about that road and see if there's anything else that we can do there.
I was going to ask, so obviously the traffic's a lot lower on Chapel Street than it is on Elm Street.
Correct.
So I, I don't know if that would help, you know, and not back up onto Elm, I would think. But is there any way to consider like a pilot to see whether or not that's something that we could look at doing or if it?
If the, if the Council would like me to try it, we can certainly do that. And we can try and look at some other types of treatments as well.
Okay, thank you.
Motion Response F, Douglas and Wentworth Streets, Council Belangia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to express gratitude to, again, the Traffic Engineer Liz Altman, who just spoke, and the administration to, by living up to our word. Most recently, Wentworth Ave, Speed Humps are in. I've already heard from a number of constituents. They're extremely pleased. Things have quieted down there a little bit and I'm very grateful. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Motion Response G, Winthrop Ave and Puffin Street, Council Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I showed this report to the resident who requested this to be on, on the motion and the, the neighbors in that area, they're all very, very happy. I want to thank the manager and Ms. Altman for providing this report. Also want to thank Assistant City Manager Sean Machado for having multiple conversations with me to, you know, make sure we understand the, the needs of, in, in this area. It is a unique neighborhood that you have a lot of, the seniors and the young families walking in, in that area. You know, there's identifying the current needs and the plan for the ADA compliant, the curbs and the ramps and sidewalks. That's gonna ensure safety for the pedestrians. Very, very appreciative. I spoke with Ms. Altman a little bit before the meeting, but I, I know a lot of people in my neighborhood watching this. Just a quick question to the Traffic Engineer. If you have a timeline when the ADA improvement will be implemented and the follow-up traffic calming study will be done?
So the Engineering Department has an ADA ramp contract that they put out every year and I have asked them to add this intersection to that contract. This year, it happened in the September, August, September timeframe that they were doing the, the sidewalk improvements. We can also look at those streets for the traffic calming program. I'm in the process of collecting everybody's requests and, and getting some data and trying to figure out the, the best places to put new things.
Wonderful. Thank, thank you. I, I know that all the councilors are smiling because I think every one of us, you have requests and work for you to do throughout the entire city. Appreciate it. I know it's gonna, gonna be done. It's, you know, it's in the plans, in the work right now. Again, thank you for all you do.
Motion Response H, Westford Street, Esteban Street, Council Dakota and Getya.
Hallelujah. Great, great to see the lights are blinking now and we'll have them up by next weekend. Hopefully, Ms. Altman, is that what we're looking at?
I, I have an update. The striping went in yesterday.
Yep.
The signal will be turned on on Friday.
On Friday, great.
On Friday.
Fantastic news. Thank you very much.
Will we be having a ribbon cutting?
A what?
A ribbon cutting for the signal that we've waited decades for?
Sure, we should. We should.
If you want to stay in the middle of the street, go right ahead.
I'll see you at seven o'clock in the morning on Friday morning.
Council Getya, go.
Thank you, Mr. Manager and your staff for the hard work that they did over there. I think it's important that that was promised to us long ago. Now we're just waiting for one more thing, sidewalks up that street where we were promised when a certain thing went up in that neighborhood, we were gonna do. And I know it's put on your plate, but thank you again. I think it makes that corner a lot safer. Thank you.
Motion Response I, Lewis Street, Council Mercy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I want to say thank you to Liz again. Tonight must be her night. She was very, very busy. DPW did replace two damaged ADA ramp warning panels at the main Holy Trinity Church driveway on Jefferson Street. I'm very grateful for that. The people that asked me about it called me and told me that they did see it. They were very happy. I know there's other things that have to be done. I know that they'd be looking for a crosswalk, but the fact is when you make things ADA compliant, you have to have the curb cut on one side to the other to accommodate anybody that's in a motorized wheelchair. So there are many, well, not many, but a few things that have to still be done. You're looking into it. The early stages of planning, that's a good thing. Anything that could be done to provide safety would be most welcome and I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Motion Response J, Gallagher Terminal Beautification, Council Yem and Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Manager Golden. This is a beautiful corridor where people come to visit Lowell, will be impressed to see. And I would like to, to see that the city work with the contractor to maintain and to keep it. In addition to that, I made a motion that if we, every Fourth of July, if we can fly the flag on, on corridor to celebrate our independence. Particularly, we will celebrate the, this, the, my centennial will be using that corridor as a way to welcome people to, to the city. And Council Scott wanted to add something to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Yem. So the only thing I would add, I know they said they're looking for grant funding. Grant funding, they said they were looking for additional grant funding for any beautification type projects, is if we can look at the street eateries downtown. Those are beautiful concrete barriers, but I think they could look a little bit nicer as far as outside the restaurants. I don't know if there's any type of grants that, that help the restaurants to, to improve the, the outdoor areas that they have. I think it would be an attraction to downtown if, if it was improved, the look of it. So, thank you.
Motion Response K, Aker Street and Merrimack Street, Council Yem.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to Traffic Engineer. October 2023, Sonia, who lived at 783, came to speak in front of the Council regarding an accident where her grandson was standing, waiting for the school bus. Somebody came down on Aiken Street, make a really wide turn onto Merrimack Street and hit the kids that are waiting for the school bus. So this is not the only incident that happened at that intersection. I would encourage and ask the city if we could, you know, look into it and ways to, to reduce it. About a month ago, there was a, a big accident, you know, the car come down from Aiken and then hitting another vehicle traveling, traveling west on Merrimack Street. So it's still a really tough corner and I understand, you know, part of the mastod and the requirement. But if we could keep an eye on that and the resident who lived in that building would be appreciated. Thank you so much.
Motion Response L, 15-minute parking, City Hall, Council Mercy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do appreciate the fact that there's parking for handicapped people to come into City Hall, to park there and come in and pay a bill. But not all our seniors are handicapped and they do still have a hard time to make it to walk. I know that every morning when I wake up. But anyway, be that as it may. I just want to clarify this and let the public know if they're still up right now. The Transportation Engineer reviewed this request. It's on the agenda for tonight for a 60-day trial and I'm very grateful for that. There is, there will be a space added at the Warden Street extension opposite the main entrance. That's right here by what I thought was Arcane Drive, but I don't know. We're not crossing the street going over to where the, okay, so it's right outside here, isn't it?
I'm sorry, the, there, there used to be two, right, that right in front of the EV stations.
Right.
When the, the posts were in the ground. So we'll just replace those with official 15-minute. And if it doesn't wind up being long enough for people, we can make them 30-minute parking.
Okay, I truly appreciate it. So right out there in front of City Hall, facing the downtown, you will see it. You will see that spot. And you don't have to be handicapped. You just have to be like me, elderly, okay? Thank you so much.
Motion Response M, Superior Courthouse, Council Scott and Janess. You're killing me, Council Scott.
It's been a long week. Council Janess.
Okay, that, sorry. Thanks for the response. I appreciate it. I would ask that we just kind of stay on their back with this. The neighbors over there have, have been reaching out to me about the increased rat issues and everything that seem to be stemming from the courthouse. I know it's the state, so our hands are a little tied. We, I don't think we can find them in the same way we could if it was a private property owner. But we gotta see what we can do here. The costs of main, of fighting the pests shouldn't fall on the neighbors because the state can't take care of their property. At the end of the day, that's really what it is for me. You know, just trying to stand up for the people who live over there and they're trying to deal with what's coming out of there. Thank you.
Council Scott.
Thank you. Just, I'd also thank you for the response. I also heard from residents, the same residents, I believe. Just if we can keep our eyes on it, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Well said. Motion Response N, Trees, Private Property, Council Scott.
Thank you. Thank you for the response. I look forward to the, the input from the Tree Committee. Thank you.
Motion Response O, Townsend Ave, Council Getya.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I think this is one of the more interesting responses I've ever read since being on the Council. Someone goes and cuts down trees. We asked that someone, how many did you cut down? Then they come before you, they tell, they ask them also, what species did you cut down? What did you do? It's like walking into a store and stealing something and asking someone, how much did you steal? Can you tell me? What type was it that you stole? I don't understand this whole timeline thing. We went to them, why would we require the property owner to provide location, number, sizes and species of trees removed? The property owner reported that 22 trees were removed. Did we verify that? Does anybody know?
So they were required, that's a part of the Conservation Commission process, right? So like when they're in front of the Conservation Commission, they are required to provide this information to the board. And so, you know, depending on the number of trees, the species and the size would determine, would allow the Conservation Commission, the, provide the, sorry, the Conservation Commission, the, the information that they need to determine what the replacement plan needs to be based on what our ordinance is. So, you know, the, the question will essentially allow the Conservation Commission to determine the, the full sort of magnitude of what the replacement plan needs to be.
I understand that point. Wouldn't we verify that before somebody came to our board and said, okay, and I'm not asking you the question because I'm sure you don't have any background on that, but through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager, doesn't that sound silly? We're asking someone to come and tell us what they stole. Okay, yeah, okay. And then we just allow them to do whatever they want. And it's in one of the toughest areas in the city. We've had flooding over there. And then not only do we find them, we say, oh, you know what, just plant a back 22, non-mature trees to start. Shouldn't it be double the fine? It should be like 44, put them back in and that's the end of it. But it seems like we just let people do whatever they want. And you can tell me what you did and we can believe you. And please do this. This whole outline of events is tough to take, especially when they just did something horrific in an area where we have major flooding. And, and I think Mayor Rourke knows the area well, as, as well as you do. And I mean, it is an area that we're all concerned with, with the flooding and when you're planting trees that are not mature and you cut them down. And then they come back and they say, we want to plant this type of species which will not live in wetlands or areas that have water tables. And they have to be told, okay, now, wouldn't we tell them what they need to be planted in the sizes? So I would ask that through you, Mr. Mayor, to the managers, we revise this stuff and make sure we have better outcomes because this doesn't even make sense to me. And that's why I think a Tree Committee needs to be in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion Response P, Plain Street, Council Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could ask, Ms. Byers Rose, thank you for the report. My question to you though is, at this time, the applicant has not applied for building permits to move forward. And they have until another year and then a site plan review for two more years. So that building, nothing could happen there for two more years before they even start construction. Is that what you're telling me?
Yeah, that's correct. Those are statutory timelines based on the approvals that they were awarded.
Have we had any communication with the people over there?
We haven't in a while. So we did for a while while they were sort of working on plans. They sort of went back and did what they needed to do in the background, realized that they were gonna need amendments. We kind of heard from them again when they, when they did that. And so it tends to, that tends to be the sort of flow for projects like this. We'll, we'll sort of hear from people when they're looking to pull together a request to go in front of the boards and then they kind of have those approvals and work in the background to like pull their financing together. So we haven't heard from them for a while, but we did ask, I did ask the Economic Development Staff to reach out to just see if we could get a status update or get, you know, some additional information from them about what, what's going on, what their timing is and what their plans are.
Need to see us sitting there for another two years in, in construction. That'll take a little while too. So if we could make that phone call, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Motion Response Q, Invite the Sheriff, Lowell Police Department, District Court Judges, District Attorney for a conversation, Council Robinson and Getya.
Thank you. Thank you very much to the City Manager and Assistant City Manager. I mean, I think it's pretty evident that we have some challenges in the community. And I think hopefully we can get some people to the table to start having these conversations because it seems like there's a break somewhere in the chain. I'm not sure where. And when I see these numbers, it's absolutely staggering. I mean, between March 1st and September 10th, 2025, LPD responded to 10,209 cat entries in this area alone. The, the calls resulted in 18,087 officer call-offs, reflecting the significant resources required to manage incidents in this zone. 606 arrests with 117 individuals arrested two or more times and 20 individuals arrested five or more times. So there's a, there's a challenge in that area. I don't know what it is. And I think we need to really work with all our partners. Because I definitely, based on these numbers, it's not our dispatches, it's not our residents, and it's not our LPD. So that leaves a couple other options in the equation, but something has to give. We all are aware that we just received notification today. I read my email, and we're hearing that it's back and forths in this area again and, and again. So hopefully we can get some of these people to the table and have these conversations to figure out a plan of action that, that works for everyone involved. You pick up the newspaper and you read stories of somebody that's been released out on probation and released and is not held and three car thefts within a certain amount of time. It's just, I, I don't know what the break in this, this chain is, but we need to figure that out ASAP. Thank you.
Council Getche.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. Through you to Manager Golden, have we reached out to any of these besides the Lowell Police? I think we can get them here.
Belanger.
Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. I've talked to a whole host of individuals and, you know, one at a time. Talked to the DA, obviously, about this. I've talked to his honor over at Lowell District Court as well as the sheriff's office. So bringing the sheriff's office as well as the DA's office to City Hall to have this discussion is something I'm very comfortable with. I don't believe that the, his honor Judge Coffey has the ability to, to, to come to City Hall to discuss this. I'm not quite confident on that. But I think that trying to work towards a solution through the DA's office as well as the sheriff's office to see how this, you know, to, to kind of put this into play to find out how we can help these folks. Because once again, it's a revolving door at this point. You know, our LPD, under Superintendent Huedon and his command staff, they're doing a great job. Our NRU is doing a great job making this change happen. And I do believe that we have done some, some good over there. We have some good offices that are really trying to concentrate, but trying to keep folks from reoffending is a real challenge. And I think, I'm not blaming anybody at this point, but this is a conversation we'll, I'll have again and, and see what we can, what can happen. I do know, however, Vinfen is looking to open, I, from my memory serves me, I believe it's April of 2026. And with the mayor's motion earlier, we'll be talking to our state delegation as well as the Healey administration to discuss how can we look for assistance. This council, as well as this administration, I think, has been very helpful. We're probably the only municipality that I know of anyhow, I'm not, that is actively looked to open up a, an assist women who are, who are in a challenge and troubling times when it comes to homelessness. And we're looking for some assistance, you know, from the perspective of the Lowell, the shelter, the Lowell, the Lowell Middle Sixth Street Shelter. So there's a lot going on here. Once again, I will speak with the DA, the sheriff, and quite frankly, I'll call his honor Judge Coffey to let him know what we're doing, and I'll, I can report back as to what happens from, from that discussion.
Could we meet with Judge Coffey?
Yeah, so he has to remain, every judge has to remain fair and impartial. So, you know, it's, to come to a public body to speak about, you know, court cases and how things go is just not something allowed to do, and I don't think it'd be something that we want to, you know, what about Joe Smith or Mary?
No, no. So we, we couldn't speak and him just listen?
Right.
Okay. Because realistically, we've tried this. We had a summit, we had nobody. We had a meeting with the district attorney down at the Purple Carrot, and we're told we're going to have a homeless court on Summer Street within two months of that meeting. We've never seen that. Here we are, you know, I think, you know, the sheriff's office is a partner in this. I think that they're, they're willing to come out. But we need everybody together to help in this, or we're just going to spin our tires, we're going to send them down to the courthouse, they're going to come right out of the courthouse, and these numbers are just going to continue to escalate and escalate. And no one really gets help. You know, and that's the sad part, is people are not getting help. And, and I think that we're reaching out to everybody we can, as the mayor made another attempt with a motion to go to Tewksbury State Hospital, where the services can be put together to help people. But we keep getting, every door we open gets pushed closed on us and kicked out. And for some reason or another, everyone can make an excuse why not to do something, why not to help? But this city needs them at this time. And you look at the resources that the residents are putting into this, the co-op teams out there every day. We're working extremely hard to try to solve this. We have 11 people in this room who have made more motions on this issue than in the history of the city of Lowell. We've sent our police to everything. We've sent our fire to Narcan everybody. We have Narcan in schools helping kids out of it, which is sad to even think of. You need Narcan in schools and you Narcan children, and we want to bring drugs to the city. It just makes absolutely no sense to me. And maybe I grew up in a different time, I don't know, but we weren't trying to promote things, and all we're asking for is people to help us lend a hand. And we can't, and everyone closes the door for some reason. I'm hoping that you can push this issue so that we can get more help, but I don't know that you'll be that successful. But I thank you for pushing forward. Thank you.
Councilor Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope I can express this correctly, but this is my feeling, and I'm not saying I'm right, but this is the way that I think of it. When you see parents, I always learned that when you're a parent and there's a husband and a wife, a father, a mother, you try to stay on the same page with the child. You don't say to the child, yes, you could do it. And the father says, no, you can't. You have to be like on the same page. I see that in life itself, when the police try so hard to do their job, and then they, they sent the, the person goes to court and the judge goes, don't do it again, because the laws are allowing the judges to make these decisions to send the person back out there. They say, let's get these people off the street. They're homeless. They need a place to live. No, they need a place to learn recovery. All we're doing is having people say, oh, let's give them clean needles. We're going to do something illegal. Let them do this illegal drug, but we don't want them to get HIV. We want them to live healthy. Live healthy so you could continue to do your drug. It, it's all messed up. You have to be on the same page. You need a facility like Tewksbury Hospital that gets them off the street. If they did something wrong, you don't want to put them in jail? Put them in this facility and help them to recover. Give them tough love and try to get them off this. That's the way that I see it. And I don't think you need to get them an apartment. They can't even take care of themselves, but let's get them into housing. No, they, they don't even know what time of day it is. You're going to have them cook their supper on a stove? I don't think so. But anyway, that's just my feeling on it. You have to be on the same page. You have to have a district attorney and a judge and the police that all work together for the same purpose, not, oh, let them go, they gotta live to get that drug and be clean. Oh, hogwash, I say, but that's the way that I see it. Maybe I'm wrong, I don't know, but...
Council Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a tough act to follow, Council Mercia. I do want to thank Assistant City Manager Sean Machado for the motion response. Sean, very detailed motion response and very revealing and very troubling at the same time. But, you know, let's highlight the good work that's going on here with the co-op team, the supreme effort they're making to get people in recovery. But a line I'd like to add to that is, despite the daily efforts of the co-op team, a significant amount of individuals continue to decline services offered. That tells the whole story right there. And the good work the police are doing, you know, to clean up South Carmen all the way to Lower Gorm Street, just, but this population keeps migrating. We're just over the weekend on the, on the back of Chow, on Chow Street and back central. I witnessed a mini mass incast where the sidewalk was completely overrun, tents on the sidewalk. I saw open air drug, drug use going on, needles with my own very eyes. It's very sad and troubling at the same time. But a lot of good work has gone on in this, in this area, but the problems still persist. And we need help, okay? These individuals who don't want help continue to wreak havoc on quality of life issues for the residents. We saw the Lowell issues we've had with the Lowell housing tenants who have come, who have petitioned this council, not to mention the owners of the keep. Their family members come in, and when the owner got put by a needle, they're now extinct. There's a mass graveyard of small businesses over the last 10 years in this, in this city, and it's got to stop. These people, if they don't want help, we can't allow them to take the city down with them. So we need help from the courts, and it's plain and simple. So I appreciate the original motion by the two co-sponsors. Until we get help from the courts, this continuation of this revolving door back out in the street, back out in the street is not doing anything. It's time for a different approach, in my opinion, involuntarily treatment when nuisance crimes are committed. Out to Tewksbury State Hospital, as the, as the mayor mentioned, but we need a newer, new approach in handing out needles and harm reduction is a spoke in the wheel that is, you know, helpful to the situation, but it's not a cure-all, as we can see. I've been watching this cottage for far too long. So if, if the Lowell, and I will mention, about 10 years ago, we did have a district judge come to my opioid task force in the mayor's reception room. They did travel at one time. I believe what the mayor's saying is truthful, but if not, we'll travel. We'll go to the judicial center, we'll go to his chambers and sit wherever they want. Name the place, name the time, we'll be there. We need help. So I hope this comes into fruition, this meeting, and it seems like this council's rowing in the same direction on this issue. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Council Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I share my colleague, Mr. Manager's frustration on this. When you see report indicated that between March 2025 and September 2025, you have 18,000 call respond, and some of the individuals, there's 117 individual arrests two or more times. That's really troubling. I said it before, a number of months ago, maybe about a year, year and a half, or maybe two years ago, about to having some sort of task force, and task force that involve everyone, everyone, leave no one out of this. Because I recall back when we have gang issue in the city, the juvenile court judge and others participated in this. The DA, the sheriff, DYS, DCF, and all those entities join in. You cannot leave. Judge cannot just say, well, you know, I'm, I can't come because I have to be fair. You still can be fair with issues, people that come through the door. This is like court, like a revolving door. People got arrested for disorder conduct, got out. Two day later, come back again, disorder conduct, maybe shoplifting. Something need to happen. These issues is the court play an important role in this. If we have to get to the governor's office or the court up there, do so because it's important. To address this issue, condition need to be set for those who are habitual violator. They will reoffend if, if, if no repercussion. Condition after a second arrest, condition that you go to get this help. Having roof food for them, and then reevaluate or address their concern or issue that they have. They can't be just, you know, going to court and let out the, the same day and go back again a couple weeks later. That's not right. That's not going to solve this issue. Frustrated, I do share that. I know you do frustrate as well, Mr. Managers, but we have to work on this and we have to really get this done. Thank you.
Council Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I feel like we have the same conversation every month, every other week, and we got to find a way to move the needle here. Mr. Manager, one thing I would ask for you to do, or someone on your team, is can we please have some conversations with, say, the 10 largest municipalities within the Commonwealth? I'm sure every single one of them is dealing with issues like this. Maybe we all need to be raising the flag together and talking to all of our delegations together to get something to move. Maybe we should include the lieutenant governor, the governor herself, in these conversations. I know that Boston struggles with this. I know that other cities struggle with this. And I can only imagine the impact this has on the collective economic output of the Commonwealth. So if we can build a team or coalition of other cities to be able to try to move the needle here and figure out what the right path forward is, and I don't know what that looks like, but I think if we get the right people in the room and ask the right questions, we might be able to do something here. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Sorry.
I, I agree as far as the coalition, and I'm glad to see, we saw the motion response. We'll be voting on something, I believe, later with Springfield. Our solicitor's been in contact with the solicitor in Springfield, and we are well aware, based on the report that came back last week, that they too are facing similar challenges. So I don't think it could hurt to include them in the conversation, you know, see what they're doing, as well as, I don't know if, if we invite a member of the governance council in, because I believe they do have a hand with dealing with judges. They oversee the judges. So I think all hands on deck when it comes to this. These numbers are staggering, and I think it's time that we really put that out there and, and let people see what we're up against. Thank you.
6.3, I'm sorry, the motion accepted, passed, filed by Council Noon, second by Council Yum, FCI, post motion passes. 6.3, Communication, put in more recommendation to amend Form Based Code Posters 23845HCID. Motion accepted, passed by Council Getche, second by Council Janess. Also FCI, post motion passes. 6.5, Communication, reappoint Cliff Krieger to the Hunger Homeless Commission. Motion accepted, passed by Council Mercia, second by Council Robinson. Also FCI, post motion passes. Seven, Votes from the City Manager, 7.1, vote transfer $421,900 overlay surplus. Read the first reading and second reading by title. To transfer amount certified by the Board of Assessors as a surplus and overlay to support the cost associated with the FY '27 recertification of values as required in the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. A motion to adopt by Council Yum, second by Council Scott. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council Robinson.
Quick question on this. Reading the background on this, through you to the, maybe city manager or solicitor, what are some of the options the council would have with this? Because it does state, the surplus may then be appropriated by the city council for other municipal purposes.
How are you?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, through you. Counselor, the overlay surplus, once it's appropriated, can be used for other purposes within the city, however, this was released specifically for this, this project. So we have done overlay surplus releases in the past, as, as the city has approached us and said, you know, we, we review our overlay every year. We see what is left to spend and what we need by state law to maintain an overlay balance as required to be prudent financially. But this, this specific one was to, to release to be able to cover the expenses of the certification we was originally put into the budget. This was a better way to fund it rather than through taxation. This is funds that are already allocated within that account.
Perfect. Thank you very much for the clarification.
You're very welcome.
Ellen, you got to do a bad job of getting a hold of Council Mercia before the meetings so she can get you out of here on time. You know what I mean?
I...
If I'm here till 10 o'clock, it's fine by me, but man, yeah. Just go see that woman right there, she'll take care of you, all right? All right. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Council Belanger.
Yes.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Dakota.
Yes.
Council Getche.
Yes.
Council Janess.
Yes.
Council Mercia.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council Yum.
Yes.
Eleven years.
Eight Orders from the City Manager, 8.1. Order of a 60-day trial. Motion adopted by Council Mercia, second by Council Getche. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Council Belanger.
Yes.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Dakota.
Yes.
Council Getche.
Yes.
Council Janess.
Yes.
Council Mercia.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council Yum.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Councilor Yum.
Yes.
11 years. Nine resolutions, 9.1, Resolution of Master in Law, Chapter 93, 94C, Section 32J. We have the first reading and second reading by title. Resolution of the City Council, the City of Law, wishes to go on record to demand the Massachusetts Legislature amend MGO Chapters 94C, Section 32J, to restore controls, substance, proximity protections for schools, parks, and playgrounds in Lowell. The motion adopted by Councilor Murcia, seconded by Councilor Getche. Roll call. Councilor Bellanger.
Yes.
Councilor Chow.
Yes.
Councilor Dakota.
Yes.
Councilor Getche.
Yes.
Councilor Janess.
Yes.
Councilor Murcia.
Yes.
Councilor Noon.
Yes.
Councilor Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Councilor Yum.
Yes.
Councilor Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Councilor Yum.
Yes.
11 years. Nine resolutions, 9.1, Resolution of Master in Law, Chapter 93, 94C, Section 32J. We have the first reading and second reading by title. Resolution of the City Council, the City of Law, wishes to go on record to demand the Massachusetts Legislature amend MGO Chapters 94C, Section 32J, to restore controls, substance, proximity protections for schools, parks, and playgrounds in Lowell. The motion adopted by Councilor Murcia, seconded by Councilor Getche. Roll call. Councilor Bellanger.
Yes.
Councilor Chow.
Yes.
Councilor Dakota.
Yes.
Councilor Getche.
Yes.
Councilor Janess.
Yes.
Councilor Murcia.
Yes.
Councilor Noon.
Yes.
Councilor Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Councilor Yum.
Yes.
Councilor Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Councilor Yum.
Yes.
Councilor Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Councilor Yum.
Yes.
11 years. Ten reports, 7.1, Transportation Subcommittee, October 21st, 25. Chairman Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Transportation Subcommittee met on October 21st. In attendance were myself, Councilor Janess, and Councilor Noon, also from Bus Patrol, Representative Michael Gorm, and Caitlin Sherry, Transportation Director of the Lowell Public Schools, Chief Hudon, and Lowell School Committeeman Bahu. Meeting was called to order, noted, noted attendance and discussion regarding Bus Patrol